The Chair is informed that we have a quorum and accordingly would ask that the town meeting members take their seats and the town meeting come to order. If the town meeting members could now please rise and join Girl Scout Troop 77026 led by Maddie Hamilton in the presentation of the colors.
Girl Scouts attention, Color Guard attention, Color Guard advance. Color Guard present the colors. Please join in saying the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Color Guard post the colors. Color Guard retreat. Town meeting members, ladies and gentlemen, the town moderator, you may be seated.
Thank you very much Maddie, Girl Scout troop members. If the rest of the meeting goes that smoothly, we'll be in good shape. And speaking of the meeting going smoothly, I'm informed that we are without our projector at the moment. Matt has run back to town meeting to get a substitute projector, but we'll be calling the reports a little bit out of order and relying on those people who are able to present without PowerPoint slides if such people exist in this day and age. Let's go through the preliminary motions as a start. It's moved in second that the following preliminary motions be voted as won. Lisa Wong, Town Manager, Stacy Ward, Controller, Town Counselors is designated, and Mark Tugend Assistant Town Manager who are not town meeting members be permitted to sit at the front of the auditorium with the select board during all sessions of this town meeting. That all members of the Finance Committee and their secretary, whether town meeting members or not, be permitted to sit together at the front of the auditorium during all sessions of this town meeting. The town clerk or her designated assistant town clerk be permitted to occupy a desk on the platform during all sessions of this town meeting. The moderator be authorized to permit members of various town boards, commissions, committees, department heads, and petitioners with special articles to sit at the front of the auditorium during consideration of appropriate articles. Then unless it otherwise be ordered, all adjourned sessions of this town meeting shall be held on successive Thursday, Monday evenings at 7:30 PM in the Winchester High School Auditorium until the work of this town meeting is completed. The cable television coverage shall be permitted at all sessions of this town meeting. The motions having been made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed. Yes? I'm informed by the town clerk that we do that after the break. So whatever the deficiencies of the vote were, I'm assuming that those two-thirds of the body that did vote in favor constitute an appropriate moving party and for the rest of the meeting, we'll just be listening to me or the town reports, which I don't think will be much of a debatable issue. So adhering to custom as opposed to probably the more preferred procedure, we'll proceed on that course, but I greatly appreciate the heads up and the point of order. So we cannot consider any appropriation of funds in the town meeting pursuant to the town bylaws and charter until the first Monday of May. And accordingly tonight, we'll be moving through the town reports and those non-financial articles, mostly the planning board articles, one through 11. Article three will be indefinitely postponed. We will then be meeting on Monday, May 6th and Monday, May 13th as necessary. So tonight, Monday, May 6th, Monday, May 13th, if we are not able to complete our business on May 6th. A few preliminary points from the chair. One, as most of you or all of you know, the town recently lost Joe Bellino. Mr. Bellino was the Heisman Trophy winner as the outstanding college football player in the NCAA. In 1960, he went on to play at the United States Naval Academy and after that, served his country in Vietnam and then went on to play a brief professional career as well. Mr. Bellino was well-known to those of us who grew up in Winchester in the 1960s and 1970s, even though he came well before us in terms of his athletic glory. His brother Sammy owned the local pizza shop on which he graced the cover of the pizza boxes in the traditional Heisman pose. So Mr. Bellino's life was also a lesson to us in that we knew that athletic achievement and academic achievement would be marked based on our achievements and not who we were or where we came from. And he went on to achieve that glory for himself and his town in a way in which we were brought up to know was the way in which the town wished to proceed. He was a humble man, did not glorify himself, spent his life trying to serve others as he served his country. And accordingly, I'd ask you to just join me in a brief moment of silence in memory of Mr. Bellino. Thank you very much. We, as is our tradition, will recognize those members of the town boards who have been elected or who have left their positions. David Orico, who has served us as a member of the Board of Assessors and then on the Select Board for a number of years and over more than the last 20 years, has served this community and always stood up for his community and his neighbors. David has retired and left his position on the Select Board. We thank him for his tremendous service to the town. We also express our appreciation and thanks to Lance Grenzback. Lance has served us not only on the Select Board, including his tenure as Chair, but also for quite a number of years on the Planning Board. During that period, he was a champion of the master plan and all in all was someone who brought to the table a great deal of erudition, patience, steadfastness, and a willingness to pursue the causes of the town for their own benefit and not for his own glory. So we express our appreciation to Mr. Grenzback and Mr. Orico for their service to the town. We congratulate Amy Shapiro and Susan Verdicchio for their election to the Board and our friend Vincent Lawrence Dixon for his efforts in the electoral effort to run for the Board. Vincent is also, this coming up tomorrow, I guess, April 30th, will be speaking at 7:00 PM at the Sanborn House on Parks, Landscapes, and Beaches of Winchester and the Parks Movement that inspired them. Tomorrow night, Sanborn House, 7:00 PM, Refreshments 7:30 program. Also, congratulations to Mr. Nixon and Ms. Bolinies for their election to the school committee. And congratulations to the Citizen of the Year, Sally Quinn. Sally, congratulations. And finally, a note of a friend of ours who is retiring. Norm Dussette began his service for the town of Winchester at the Department of Public Works in the Parks Department some 45 years ago. And when he started out, Norm was in charge of the Packard Tennis Courts. He went on eventually to leave the tennis courts in the Parks Department and transferred about 18 years ago over to the recycling center where he has been a transfer station operator and recycling coordinator for the past 45 years. Norm is retiring this June. Even more remarkable than Norm's friendship and welcome smile at the transfer station and his tremendous service to our community has been the fact that for 48 years, beginning when he was 19 years of age, Norm Dussette has been a member of the Winchester Town Meeting. So congratulations, Norm, on your retirement. Thank you very much. Forty-eight years and only two moderators. So this brings us to the town reports. Trusting that perhaps the Health Department can give its report without the benefit of a PowerPoint. Dr. Botari for the Board of Health. Okay, that was easy. Oh, there she is. Perfect. Thank you very much, Shannon, we appreciate it. No.
Does it matter?
Yep, here we go. Try, it should be working now.
Hello? I didn't realize I was going first. I would've gotten rid of my gum. Thank you. No projector, I've got gum, okay. Okay, I'm Shannon Botari. I'm a local physician and also a mom in Winchester of three at McCall and Ambrose. And I am on the Board of Health with Kathy Donahue, Carrie Bartlett, both of whom have been on the Board of Health with me for many years, under the direction of Jen Murphy, right back there for 15 years. She's amazing. So, and most of the time when we meet, once a month, we go over our general issues, most of which ensures the safety of our community and our residents. That's our number one issue, obviously. We also gear towards keeping our restaurants and our food all safe, our animals safe, making sure we allow the public to know our emergency status if there is a public health issue, preventative issues like vaccination clinics, reporting diseases when need be, which in the news right now, I'm sure you guys have been reading about the measles outbreak, mostly out west, but it's important, obviously, reportable illnesses. This year, our prevention efforts are mostly with vaccinations. We have HPV, in which 21, I think, Jen, right, 21 people participated in this year at the McCall and high school level. Obviously pneumonia, shingles, and most importantly, flu vaccine clinics are very, very successful. The numbers are on the slides, but let me just see if I can quickly review for numbers. 1302, so over 1,300 flu vaccines given, and that was for the 10th year at all seven schools. Thank you to all the nurses and administration and the schools that help us do that, obviously, keep that successful. Also, flu mist was offered again after a two-year hiatus. The CDC recommended that, so it's not as good as the injectable, but it certainly is better than nothing. So we encourage people to come out. Sometimes that's easier for the little we ones. As they said, we held our second school-based HPV vaccination. That was a little bit on the newer side, not so controversial anymore. I think it was the entry of it a few years ago. People were wide-eyed about it, but now it's certainly been rolling out easily, so that was great. Our public health programs and policy, we've implemented revised Massachusetts Code for recreational camps and children's, redefined what a camp is to keep them safe. Obviously, keeping their vaccinations all up to date is one of the most important, so we've clarified those requirements. And also, you know, focusing on safety of the camp activities, expanding the definition of the camp. Specifically, highlights in 2018 have been the meds and sharps collections, 877 pounds of medication from two take-back days, 24 hours seven kiosk in the police officer, in the police department in the lobby. We've collected approximately 41,000 or a little bit over needles, which is great. And hazardous waste collections are important as well. Just to shout out this coming weekend, on Saturday, I think it's from 9:00 to 1:00, Jen, right? Okay. So this Saturday, May 4th, 9:00 to 1:00 at the DBW Yard, which is 15 Lake Street, open to all residents. It's free. Don't bring your paint, your latex paint or your batteries. There's a list online of what you guys can bring, but you know, any fertilizer stuff in your garage or pool chemicals, things like that, bring it on down. So we've collected over 12,000 pounds of hazardous household waste this year from two annual collections so far. So looking forward to that this Saturday. Let's see, what else am I gonna? Oh, and last but not least, for sure, our Winchester Coalition for a Safer Community, which is a group that was mostly devised by our special DOT Butler. And it's a focus on outreach of prevention, mostly risky behaviors for youth, including alcohol, drugs, you know, generally risky behaviors in the community, and most importantly, recently vaping, which a lot of us have been hearing about from either the kids or on TV, whatnot. So we've been very successful in the Coalition for a Safer Community. Specifically, DOT introduced a Lunch and Learn series. We've had seven since January, so a total of 14 this calendar year. And those have been very, very successful with a lot of people coming out to be informed and be engaged about what's going on in our youth community. Trying to increase our better choices from the kids. We obviously have been putting that on the forefront with the Board of Health. So, and we thank the Cummings Properties, obviously the Cummings Foundation, for letting us sustain the grant for the Winchester Coalition for a Safer Community. So that's been really helpful to us and will continue in the future. And then for more information, you can go to www.winchester.us, which I'm sure most of you are familiar with that site, or call us at the Health Department if you have any questions. I think that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Botari. And we'll, as Matt sets up the replacement projector, we'll now hear from Angela Murdo from the Library Board of Trustees.
Good evening. I'm Angela Murdo, the current Chair of the Library Board of Trustees, and I'm here to report on the status of the library. My co-trustees are Ingrid Geis, Wendy Carl, Jane Murray, and Mary Ann O'Callaghan. As trustees, we've always felt very fortunate that the library is consistently well-supported by the town. Thank you for our current budget, which maintains our current level of operations and service, which therefore maintains the library's accreditation in the state of Massachusetts. The library continues to be a community center, hosting meetings, lectures, film series, and a variety of children's programs. Last year, the library welcomed more than 236,000 visitors who checked out more than 453,000 items. We have a total of 15,746 borrowers, but those numbers don't tell it all. Well-print materials continue to make up the majority of the library's circulation with at least four times the amount of any other format. Its electronic resources are being used more than ever. Patrons are downloading eBooks, audiobooks, streaming videos, and accessing educational databases and even online items such as Consumer Reports reports. eBooks and e-audio in particular have seen jumps of circulation 41% and 62% respectively. One of the ways libraries are changing to meet the needs of patrons is to offer a library of things, and Winchester Public Library is no exception. The library offers patrons the opportunity to borrow Chromebooks, MacBooks, Apple and micro USB chargers, and even noise-canceling headphones, hotspots, and Rokus. In the last year, the library has added more of many of these items, and hotspots are by far the library's most popular items in this class. In addition to all the resources the library offers, it also offers a community gathering space for meetings. The demand for such space is so great that we will be building two new study rooms, which the library hopes to have underway this year. The library's programming reaches many people in town. The Friends of the Library plans and hosts multiple programs throughout the year, and the teen program was expanded in 2018. While the library continues to host author visits, book discussion groups, and lecture series, you may also be interested in the new Art Club Instruction Series or the new Cookbook-Based Book Club. Cookbook-Based Book Club. Children's programming also continues to be vibrant, with Storytime Clubs for Preschoolers, younger children's storytimes, LEGO science workshops, and standalone programs with musicians, scientists, and literacy-related themes. The Winchester Reads program has been revamped, and I am pleased to share with you, the book chosen for this year is Tomorrow Will Be Different. The kickoff event for a series of Fall 2019 programming events will be a visit from Sarah McBride, the author. In terms of the building itself, the carpet was replaced, security cameras were updated, and digital signs were installed to highlight programming and announcements. This year, the furnace and chillers will be replaced, and two new study rooms will be added. All building improvements have been well-received. The spring of 2018 brought much of the town together following the tragic event at the library. The library staff was very appreciative of the support from people near and far as the library moved forward. A bench in Memorial Garden and Deanne's Memory have been installed outside the library, and we welcome you to visit this spring. In closing, your library continues to serve the town well, thanks to the strong support from town government, Friends of the Winchester Library, a strong volunteer network, and all of you. Thank you for your ongoing support of the library and its mission.
Thank you very much. Two reports, under four minutes with no slides, could be a lesson there for us. The Select Board through its chairperson, Mr. Gulliboff.
All right, thank you, Mr. Moderator, Town Meeting. So, let me talk about what we have been doing since Fall Town Meeting and also some of the goals for the future. Before I do that, on behalf of our whole board, we'd like to thank Lance Grenzaback and Dave Arico, who retired from our board last month. Lance spent six years on our board and many years on the planning board before that, as the moderator earlier said, and Dave spent three years on our board and a lot of years on the Board of Assessors before that. Both Lance and Dave volunteered a lot of their time to help Winchester over the past decades, and we thank them for their service. Also, I would like to welcome our newest members, Susan Verdicchio and Amy Shapiro to our board. So, what else has happened lately? At last Fall Town Meeting, I think Lisa, you had been here for about three days, and then we asked her to come up with two different budgets and jump right in the middle of the first general operating override we had in over a decade, so I'm happy to report that Lisa's still here, even after that. But speaking of the override, so the voters approved a $10 million multi-year operating override in the March election. From that, $2 million is for the capital and building stabilization funds, and the remainder, 4.7 million, is to be used for the FY20 operating budget. FinCom will have a lot more details on that, I'm sure, and that means that 3.3 million is left in what is called excess capacity. That means that doesn't get taxed on FY20, so that will be used in fiscal years after FY20. We will continue the State of the Town Group that met over the last year, and we will continue after Town Meeting to project future financial needs of the town, to explore all possible efficiencies, and hopefully maximize the life of the operating override. So, jumping into something else that we're working on, climate change right now poses an existential threat to our way of life, and I believe our generation will be judged in the future by our action or lack of action on this threat. While the global impact of rising temperatures, sea levels, and crop failures gets much of the attention, the changing climate poses risks at the local level that we need to prepare for. One of the most visible impacts of that is flooding. Winchester has spent millions of dollars in projects to prevent flooding, like we have seen in the past. Rising water levels and increased precipitation threaten to overwhelm those projects. We have done a number of projects over the years that help reduce our municipal carbon footprint, as well as lower our energy costs, from LED streetlights to adding solar panels at the V.O. School and the DPW Building. At this Town Meeting, you will be asked to approve a pilot and safety railings to be able to install several panels on this building. Last week, the Select Board adopted a policy that is similar to many of our neighboring towns and cities, and it reads, "Winchester will strive toward net-zero greenhouse gas emissions with a commitment to reach at least 80% reduction below the 2006 baseline emission level of GHG emissions by 2050, and interim goals of 40% reduction by 2030 and 60% reduction by 2040." To help guide us towards those measurable goals, as well as devise recommendations for how to address the problems that will be brought on by climate change, we need to update the 2011 Climate Action Plan. To that end, the Town Manager created the Climate Action Plan Committee with the goal of having the updated plan by November. We have also been working to address our affordable housing shortage. As you can see from this graph, less than 2% of housing units in Winchester are in the subsidized housing inventory. When a town has less than 10%, then the 40B law allows developers to bypass our zoning in order to build dense housing that is often out of scale with the surrounding neighborhood. There are two ways to avoid hostile 40Bs, one is to reach 10% of affordable housing, and the other is to gain what is called safe harbor by having an approved housing production plan and then producing a set number of units per year. We started working on our housing production plan about 18 months ago, happy to report that on February 25th, the Department of Housing and Community Development, DHCD, approved it. So, now that the housing production plan is approved, we are still vulnerable to 40B developments until we actually increase the number of units in the SHI. The required number of units to gain safe harbor for two years is 79, and to gain safe harbor for one year is 40. That doesn't mean that once we achieve safe harbor that we can just sit back and reject all developments. We will need to keep producing units, or after safe harbor expires, we will be back where we started. But there are a number of strategies that we can deploy to continue producing units. For example, we can work cooperatively with developers in what is usually called a friendly 40B, to create developments that are more in scale with the surrounding neighborhoods. We also have some amount of town-owned land that can be used more effectively for mixed use. Article 22 will cover an easement for the Waterfield Lot, where we're considering issuing a request for proposal for redevelopment. So, the housing production plan enumerates several strategies that we can use, there will be a quiz after, and some of them are going to be in front of this Town Meeting. The planning board will speak more about number 16, which extends inclusionary zoning. Also on the warrant is the third recommendation from the housing production plan, which is to establish a municipal housing trust fund. We'll talk more about this on Article 15. And there are a number of other initiatives that our board continues to work on. We received a payment for Winning Farm, which was originally intended to be used for affordable housing, but since the Affordable Housing Trust will not be established until after this Town Meeting, we will look to appropriating this money at Fall Town Meeting, so we will be back. Still talking about the Winning Farm money. The Massachusetts School Building Authority denied our request last year to partner with us to rebuild the Lynch and Morocco Schools, so in conjunction with the school committee, we resubmitted our statement of interest to the MSBA to rebuild the schools. As our population has grown, so have our traffic and pedestrian safety issues, we hear about that every day. Our Town Manager will have more details on specific projects, but the approval of the override certainly helps with the necessary funding to address the problem areas. And flood mitigation projects continue to be carried out, there is one large project left, the Morocco Culvert, to be funded. We also continue to work with our Legislative Delegation and the MBTA on the reconstruction of the Town Center Station, it has been many years, but it is progressing towards the end of the design. So, to close, I'd like to thank all the Town Employees and the volunteers that worked so hard to put this Town Meeting together, as well as Wincamp for broadcasting the proceedings so that all residents, even those not able to attend, can still see their government effort. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Gulliboff. We'll now hear from the Finance Committee through its chairperson, Mr. Cattila. Mr. Cattila.
Good evening and thank you, Mr. Moderator, Select Board, Town Manager, Town Meeting Members, other committee members, residents and staff. What a long and fun, fun budget season this has been. Before... There we go. Before talking about budget specifics, I wanted to highlight the atypical process that this budget season has followed, specifically the time period since we met last at Special Town Meeting on February 11th, as hopefully, I think, you'll recall, all analysis and communication of the override up until and including Special Town Meeting was for a total funds amount of $12 million. Based on sentiment from that Town Meeting and then various input channels, that amount was ultimately felt to be too high, and was reduced by vote of the Select Board on February 14th to $10 million. That left the Town Manager with one whole day to put together two whole budgets, so thank you, Lisa, for the efforts you put in, we really appreciate that. I also want to highlight that, whoops, I'm sorry, this is a little different, I want to highlight that the Town Manager, multiple committees, school committee, et cetera, came together and came up with some last-minute cuts in the spirit of that lower number. And then the last thing that I would highlight is that much of the plan remains intact, which means that it's possible, even likely, that this is not a three-to-five-year override, as has been discussed, but a two-to-three-year override. And that timeframe was communicated in the lead-up to the election and is still on the override website, I made sure to double-check, so that has been put out there. The outcome of all this, of course, is that the reduced override amount was approved, 28-45 votes for to 18-99 against, which finalized the budget direction for FY20, but of course, which creates questions for us moving forward. Some additional points about process, specifically the lens through which Finance Committee viewed the process and then the budget. Leading up to the override, we were very much involved, less about deciding the priorities, though, and more about ensuring that they fit within the framework that Finance Committee typically uses to judge spending decisions. Match the spending priorities, yes, but in particular that the override would provide relief to two of the bigger concerns brought up in recent years by Finance Committee and by others, concern about the declining reserves and use of one-time revenue sources to fund the operating budget. After the override vote, we shifted into more traditional territory, acting as a check to ensure the now-voted priorities were funded, and of course, to keep sustainability in mind, that this was not a spending free-for-all, and it turns out that it was not, so that's good. So, with explicit comparison to what was communicated at Special Town Meeting, which is a little bit different, we typically highlight this relative to the Town Manager's budget, this is where the FinCom proposed budget nets out. The total proposed is 128.3 million, less than what was originally thought needed to meet the communicated override priorities, but still 5.15% higher than FY19. Less free cash reserves turned out to be needed as inputs to the FY20 budget, 400K instead of the communicated 1.5 million, and considerably less than last year. Note, though, that just because free cash and reserves aren't being used to balance the budget, doesn't mean they're not being used. We have a bit of a track record of using a lot of free cash at Town Meetings for various articles, and this year we have 869K on the docket throughout the rest of the Spring Town Meeting. If all of that passes, plus the 400K in the budget, we're at 1.3 of the 1.5 million that was expected. And then also, note that the 400K is roughly half of what Finance Committee plans for in terms of annual reversions, so that means that if any reversions come in at the end of FY20 that are greater than that 400K, we'll be adding to our reserves. Perhaps, though, one of the most important highlights of the override, Mariano kind of touched upon already, is that it does not spend the full, up to the full $10 million that was approved, right? We're only spending 4.7 of that for operations and two for capital moving forward. Now, if we completely follow the plan that was laid out associated with the override, the remaining 3.3 of the allowable tax levy limit can and likely would be used in the next year or two. Obviously, that'll be dependent on years after that. Now, continuing with the look back to Special Town Meeting, here's where the proposed budget nets out by key categories, in all cases slightly lower than was communicated. This doesn't mean that the override priorities were not funded, because as you will see in a second, they were. Rather, this was the normal tightening of assumptions that comes with additional time and analysis, remembering, of course, that our normal budget review didn't occur until, of course, after the override budget was submitted on February 15th. So, this next slide highlights the key requests that were communicated associated with the override, and as you can see by the fancy green checkmarks, those are all proposed to be funded. I'm only speaking to kind of the key Town Departments. Michelle and ultimately Capital, I'm assuming, will talk about some of the specifics associated with their particular committees and departments. Now, of course, the passage of the override doesn't mean there are no concerns, come on, this is FinCom, and we always are concerned. So, here's some of the items that we discussed during our budget review and that we will continue to keep a close eye on in the foreseeable future. Contracts, salaries are always a main driver in budget increases, right? One of the contracts for the town, that of the teachers, has been signed, the remaining for town and schools are beginning or in negotiation right now. Obviously, those need to fit within a Proposition Two and a Half plus New Growth framework to make sure that they're sustainable within the override that we've talked about and in general. From a school enrollment standpoint, obviously, there's impact on school spending, which is a huge component, as we all know, of the budget. This obviously isn't something that FinCom has control over, it's something that we keep a close eye on. You can see here that kindergarten numbers, as we understand, and again, Michelle will speak to this in her presentation, are trending higher than normal, so something to keep in mind, and then, of course, there's always the concern about potential 40B development. We always review assumptions from an enrollment perspective as part of our review, obviously we'll continue to do that and give that additional scrutiny in the coming years. Other areas of concern, typically, we're talking about OPEB, but tonight, we also want to highlight the funding of the pension liability, and particularly the timing of the funding of the pension liability. You can see the numbers here, but the ones I would stress are that to fully fund this in the currently hoped-for timeline by FY29, we're going to see some great increases in annual spend requirement. There also will be a motion later in Town Meeting regarding a COLA increase, and then, you know, there's obvious uncertainty associated with the new actuarial valuation that will be coming out later this year. I'm not stressing any kind of value judgment here, I'm simply saying that the pension liability looks to become a large expense on top of the 5.132 that it was this year through the end of its lifecycle. Now, back to OPEB, because that is something we typically talk about. Again, we are underfunding. FinCom would like to see a policy at the Select Board level that, once the pension liability is fully funded, that we shift that annual funding or a high percentage of it to funding OPEB moving forward. If we were spending at the current annual required contribution level, I think, and Stacy could probably correct me here, I don't think we would fund until 2047, so what we're talking about is trying to get to a point where we're funding that at least by 2047, perhaps even a little bit sooner. Of course, health insurance always is a concern. The Town Manager negotiated a good deal for us this year, holding the policy increase to just over 3%. However, we can't expect that every year, and should instead inspect higher costs moving forward, more in line with about 7% to 10%. And for context, remember that health insurance expense jumped 11.5% last year, this fiscal year FY19 over FY18. Legal expenses also continue to be a concern. We have upped the budget by 6.7% two years in a row, and even so, you can see that in FY19, we are considerably going over budget. in a row, and even so, you can see that in FY '19, we are considerably going over budget. All of this is related to, or most, to growing litigation costs and is something that I know the, the Town Manager and Select Board are looking at going forward. So, these are just some of what keeps FinCom up at night. There are others, but in the interest of time, I thought I would cut it a little bit short. So, where does this leave us from an operating reserve standpoint? We expect to end FY '19 at around 10.29%. That includes the one-time influx of the $1 million in proceeds from the winning, the sale of Winning Farm that Mariano just brought up, which I also and we also feel like has been discussed for a long, long time. This $1 million, this, these funds are tentatively earmarked, as was just highlighted. Without that, we would be at 9.44% ending FY '19. That said, how quickly these reserves decline will be a matter of much discussion, I'm sure, at town meetings to come. The two lines that I'm showing here are just potential paths, right? They take the assumptions that we used in the modeling of the override up through this entire process, hold those constant, and then look at a few different variables. And, you know, those variables in this case are continuation of phased spending associated with the override. If you remember, some requests were phased beyond just FY '20. That doesn't mean they are, are locked in at this point, but we will probably hear them come up again. If those come into play, that could obviously have a big impact on how our reserves hold, and then ultimately, what the duration of the override is, right? Tweaking any of these numbers or assumptions can greatly impact the reserves percentage. And if you tie this back to how I opened, like I say, this, this really impacts the duration. If we look at risk of dipping below that 6% lower boundary of the reserves policy. So, I'll just close with a few thoughts here, and I promise they're not all negative. We have temporarily eased recent budget pressure with the passage of the override. The FY '20 proposed budget funds the voted operating and capital spending priorities. However, and here's the however, right, is that the remaining phased override spending increases and some of these other concerns and then many other impacts, of course, will have an impact on the duration of this override. Will it be two to three years? Will it be the originally discussed three to five? TBD at this point, right? We obviously all need to be eyes wide open about the impact of any further override-related spending increases in years beyond FY '20, and of course, FinCom will make sure to provide the analysis that hopes, or that helps everybody keep their eyes wide open to that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Cattell. We'll now hear from the School Committee, Michelle Bergstrom. Ms. Bergstrom.
Hi, good evening. My name is Michelle Bergstrom, and I'm the Chair of the School Committee. Thanks to the moderator and everyone for attending Town Meeting this evening. We welcome Karen Bollinese on the committee as our newest member, and we say goodbye to Susan Verdicchio, who has served us well on the School Committee for many years, and we hope that she has as much enjoyment of being on the Select Board. It is a pleasure to share the School Committee report with you this evening. Before I begin, I'd like to thank the State of the Town Committee, Select Board Members Mariano Golubov, Lance Grenzabek, School Committee Members Susan Verdicchio, Chris Nixon, Finance Committee Members Matt Marata, Aaron Cotillo, Sam Allison, and Nicole Soto, our Capital Planning Members Helen Filio, Roger McPeak, and our Planning Board Member Diab Garius, for their year-long work and dedication to digging deeply into Winchester's budget, analyzing our financial history, and clearly quantifying our future needs. Their hard work and that of many other Winchester Board Members, residents, and volunteers help to clearly communicate our needs-based fiscal year '20 budget and beyond. We also have to thank the voters of Winchester for approving the override two to one. The fiscal year '20 budget allows us to maintain and improve our strong teaching staff, reasonable class sizes, elective offerings, world language program, social-emotional support, and a technology director. The teaching staff is the heart of the Winchester's successful school system, which is supported by our strong community and our dedicated students. From the youngest learners at kindergarten to our independent high school seniors, the teaching staff is dedicated to guiding all students through their day and to be their best selves academically and socially and emotionally. The budget voted for fiscal year '20 will increase funding over last year, in part to satisfy the district's contractual salary increases. In an increasingly competitive marketplace, market rate adjustments to the teacher's salary schedule were necessary to stay competitive with regional-like districts, as Winchester fell well below the median at most points in the teacher's salary schedule. Winchester was, in fact, at the lowest paid of the data-driven collaboratively identified 10-district comparison group for both beginning teachers and the very experienced teachers. The teachers' 2019 to 2021 contract settlement allows for a small cost of living increase for all of the teachers and small corrections along the pay scale to bring the teachers at or near the median salary of our peer districts. A total increase of 8.97% spread over three years. 4.4% of this increase happens and has been budgeted for in fiscal year 2020. There will be a smaller market adjustment in the subsequent years. We invest in our new teachers, and we want them to continue with us. As our more experienced teachers reach retirement, the district needs to be able to remain competitive to attract these new teachers. As well, as part of our settlement, the teachers will be working an additional two workdays, and their pace of movement across the salary schedule will be slowed based on their degree status or additional graduation credits that they attain. This will slow the rate of the increase in coming years. As we do every year, the district has also budgeted an amount sufficient to account for the three contractual units that we have yet to settle in the unallocated wage adjustment. So, pictured here, you see one of our high school classes. It would be ideal if all of our high school classes were this size. This is 22 students. Part of our override budget will be able to help maintain our class sizes that we currently have at the middle and high school, which are generally closer to 30. The override budget will allow us to maintain the reasonable class sizes at elementary per school committee guidelines. Maintaining our school committee guidelines at elementary school will allow us to maintain the needs of an increasingly diverse community of students and create the kind of personal relationships that aids in our youngest learners' social-emotional development. We're excited that the budget you will be voting also includes budgeting for program improvement. We will be able to increase our elective offerings to allow students to follow their passions in social studies, drama, technology, art, music, and family and computer science. Middle and high school students' experience of school is enriched when they have the opportunity to explore and experience elective subjects. In addition, the students' opportunity for world language and cultural growth will be expanded by the addition of Mandarin at middle school and world language beginning at sixth grade. We plan to add two sections of Mandarin at sixth grade next year and grow the program incrementally as our students age up and their proficiency grows. Within two years, the district expects to fully implement the proficiency-based model of world language instruction. Further additions to staff and personnel include a technology director who will be dedicated to improving how the district interfaces with technology, oversee our BYOD program, and work collaboratively with town systems. The budget will also allow us to add a K-5 Adjustment Counselor, who is a staff member trained in clinical social work at the elementary schools, who will support our students through counseling sessions and small group peer social skills work. Adjustment counselors also support the teachers by modeling how to embed social-emotional lessons throughout the school day. In addition, the district is excited to begin to fulfill our goal of full-time kindergarten aides. We will move incrementally next year from halftime aides to three-quarter time with the intention to move to full-time in fiscal year '21. This is where most students get their best first start, and the district begins to identify needs and offer support where needed. Our kindergarten aides are essential to providing that support to our students. The budget also increases counselor support for the middle school by adding a .4 teacher. We add a teacher for social-emotional support at the high school in our mandated special education programs, and a K-8 board-certified behavior analyst to help with social-emotional needs as well. We will also expand our capacity to support students at the high school, particularly in the area of special education. So, as you can see, as our community continues to grow, as does our district population. While the override, override budget allows us to maintain our outstanding programs and services for student growth, we have already seen, it also provides some small program improvements in the first...whoops. I'm sorry. Our goal is to budget out our out-years to help us to continue to maintain our programs while keeping in mind any student growth that could still come. We also continue to be challenged by classroom space at the elementary level, with many of our schools reaching capacity on available classroom spaces. Not only are more students moving into the district, but we're retaining more students than we have in the past. At one time, we, we maintained about, we lost about 13% of our students between eighth and ninth grade. That, in the last few years, has fallen down to about around 7.5%. So, we are maintaining more of our students, about 25 students per year between eighth and ninth grade than we have in the past. While the override budget will allow us to provide some provision for the growth we continue to see, we're constantly attentive to potential large-scale development and the anticipated student growth that may accompany it as well. So, while the elementary population has been stable in the past three years, in 2019, the district will welcome the largest kindergarten class it has seen in the last 10 years. At Special Town Meeting, based on census data and preregistrations, our kindergarten was projected to be 330 students for 2018-19. We currently have 355 kindergarteners pre-registered. As this incoming kindergarten class moves up, the district will likely need to add at least one elementary position back into our budget in subsequent years. Currently, for the next fiscal year, we are budgeted for 110 classrooms, and we're projected to use 109. We also need to thank Town Meeting for the support of the McCall Project, and we have entered Phase Two with that. As you can see on the left in this slide, is the timeline that we expect to be able to follow with occupancy in the fall of 2020. As we continue to move forward with this project, we intend to work with all stakeholders involved to make sure there are clear areas at the back for drop, of the school for drop-offs. We may at times have limited access to the back of the school in the fields and buildings as the work progresses, and we intend to be able to keep in touch with the Mr. Lynn at the middle school to communicate these issues going forward. And there is also a McCall-specific project link on the homepage of the district website, and from that link, you can find more information about the project and how it progresses. So, that leads us to what has, what keeps the School Committee up at night. So, our budget outlook for trends for fiscal year '21 and beyond, the things that we are keeping in mind are the large-scale developments that are proposed in town. We have heard here about Fells Hardware, about the River Street, excuse me, the River Street developments, and we still have the CVS site. These developments have been proposed or under consideration, and we're always keeping an eye on what future space and staffing needs might rapidly expand to as well. We will continue to carefully monitor the town census, move-ins, registrations, and other data to see if this new trend will continue. As Mr. Cotillo also mentioned, we have also resubmitted our statements of interest on both Lynch and Morocco elementary schools. The district expects to hear of the state's interest to partner with us by December of 2019 on whether those projects would move forward. Lastly, we are cognizant that we must try to make our town and financial resources last as long as possible. Also, as you've also heard from our Finance Chair, they expect the override to last about two to three years, and we are going to incrementally invest in our students and staff and programming, both this fiscal year and going forward, to aid in having that override last as long as we can. This year's budget increase to the schools allows us to catch up on much-needed staffing and curriculum. We are extremely grateful to the town of Winchester and to our Town Meeting Members for supporting an override budget that makes these incremental changes possible, provides for program improvement, and supports attracting and retaining quality staff. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Bergstrom. We'll now hear from Lisa Wong, the Town Manager. Ms. Wong.
Okay. Good evening, Town Moderator, appointed elected officials, and those of you watching at home. I first want to thank my Assistant Mark, Stacy, my staff, and all the department heads. You've been really great in giving me a very warm welcome and being very patient with me as I'm catching up the speed. As you can tell, we are very busy in this town. We have a lot of projects, priorities, and plans, and I'm just letting you know, this is a partial list, is a highlight. There's a lot going on that you'll hear about, so I encourage a lot of you to go to the town website and specifically to the Town Manager page, where we are producing a monthly newsletter that goes into depth on these number of projects. So, first, I want to mention the affordable housing. A housing production plan was approved by the state last month, which means that we can work towards 40B developments that count towards our inventory and help us get to safe harbor, and you'll also be considering an affordable housing trust, which is one tool to help us develop and maintain affordable housing in the community. The climate action plan was mentioned by our Chair. This is actually an update from 2011, and if you can imagine, a lot has changed since then. So, I want to thank the Committee for doing the hard work over the next few months to update this plan. Collective bargaining agreements. The six town agreements all end this June 30th, and we are in negotiations, negotiations with them at the moment. The cultural district, we're going to be planning a site visit soon, or site walk, but the Mass Cultural Council will be looking at putting this on their August agenda, and we will be very pleased to get this accepted. The code of bylaws, this is a project that we hope to get done soon. This was last updated in 2013. We hope to digitalize it and actually have it be searchable online. The field management study, this is a group that's been working on looking at our fields throughout town and making sure that they're not overused. There's a number of very great sports teams that have been very wonderful in helping to support the fields, but also we have a lot of people who want to use them. So, this management study is in the drafting stage at the moment. Our fire chief has announced that he will be retiring in September, and we have a committee in place that will be both doing a department overview report and also conducting the search and selection process for the new chief. The Housing and Human Services Coordinating Council, this is a result of a needs assessment that was completed. I actually was here for the final reporting out of it back in the fall, and I'm pleased that we have had several meetings and working towards providing a resource guide to the community for the various needs of our population. The Van was funded by a Fall Town Meeting, and I'm pleased to report that it's 90% funded. There's another $15,000 grant that's been requested, and if that is achieved, then we will fully have, we will fully fund it, the Van. The MBTA station, this is in design, our last meeting, the MBTA reported that they were at 30% design and that they were hoping to have a public hearing soon, so we will report that out so that you can attend. The plastic bag bylaw, I know you'll be discussing that later, but Phase Two begins on May 1st. Phase One is essentially the three large stores, CVS, Stop &amp; Shop, and Mahoney's, and they have all complied. Phase Two, which begins in March, May 1st, is all the stores that are under 4,500 square feet, and a number of them have already complied. Public safety radios, you'll be considering the second request at this town meeting. This is about a half a million-dollar project. I'm also letting you know that we have contacted our state senator. Jason Lewison asked that he put in $100,000 earmark, so we will see if we're able to get some funding through the state budget process for that. And also, traffic studies, we have three that we're looking at right now. Cross and Highland, the data collection to begin that process will happen next week. McCall School, that's in design right now, and we expect that construction will begin summer of 2020. And Church and Waterfield, as part of the budget process, there's additional funding for engineering studies, so we'll be funding that in 2020 once that passes. So, this is a current, this is, this is as of today. This is a constantly changing bid and construction schedule. So, again, this PowerPoint presentation will be on the website if you want to look at this more detail. There's things that are missing. For example, Lake Street is a bridge that has recently had some issues. You will be considering an article later on in Town Meeting to provide some funding for engineering. So, there's things that constantly come on and off this list depending on funding, priorities, and so on. But as you can see, there's a number of construction projects slated for this summer, including the McCall School. There's also a number of solar panel projects. There's also a number of solar panel projects, water and wastewater projects, flood mitigation, and so on. You guys went over McCall already? So this is a PowerPoint that I put together to give you a summation of the financial best practices and goals that we adhere to on an annual basis. So as you can see, we're at May where it says approval, that's from you. During the summer, when the current fiscal year is over, we're going to be doing a lot of reconciliation of our books. In the fall, there's an independent auditor that comes in, and the Department of Revenue from the state also comes in to do a review. And the winter is when we do our internal review, kind of a mid-year review, and start the internal budget process. And again, February, we put together the budget, and that cycle goes around again. But there's a lot of checks and balances in place. Our comptroller or treasurer are part of our finance team. Personal additions, this was a previous slide for FinCom, but I just wanted to point out in council and aging, this is going up from about three point five to about five. This is the additional, the addition of two part-time van drivers and also an increase in the transportation coordinator from nineteen hours to twenty-eight hours, part of our priority to provide more transportation for seniors and goes along with the van that was funded. So we've received over half a million dollars in grants. These are just some of the highlights, green communities. We were, I think, one of the first to receive grants and have been very consistent since receiving about, oops, just over two hundred thousand dollars. The ADA Transition Plan Grant, this is a forty thousand dollar grant. The study is actually happening right now, but we are looking at our buildings, our fields, and even our website to make sure that they comply with ADA policies. We're going to put together a plan to provide best practices. We're going to figure out how much all that costs. We'll begin to prioritize that and hopefully make a really big dent in that. The Safer Fire Grant will fund two firefighters, and that will start this fiscal year. And the Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Planning Grant, we just received notification a couple days that we received this. This is twenty-two thousand dollars. This is to help us be prepared for climate change. I also wanted to point out that we receive a lot of generous donations from all of you. In fiscal year '17, we received five hundred eighty-five thousand dollars in donations. Fiscal year '18, seven hundred fifty thousand, and this current fiscal year to date, four hundred and forty thousand dollars. So thank you to all of you. I also want to thank our representative Day, who has put an earmark on the house side for the Salt Marsh Pavilion, and we'll see where the final budget lands soon. Okay, as to what keeps me up at night, I just want to bring two issues to your attention. We have a current contract for recycling that ends in 2021. To put it in numbers, we pay about ten dollars and forty cents per ton for a single stream. When that contract is up, we anticipate that that number could go to sixty to eighty dollars per ton. That will be a big budget buster. We implore all of you to help us find solutions for that, but it's not just about recycling, it's going to be about waste reduction, so you'll be hearing a lot about this in the future. All right, one more issue that keeps me up at night, pedestrian safety and traffic issues. Thank you for funding three additional crossing guard positions in the override. We are doing an analysis to see where we are, and the latest numbers between January and April 28th, last year at this time during this time period, we've had, we had a hundred and one accidents and nineteen injuries. This year, we've had sixty-two accidents and eleven injuries. We're still trying to figure out why there's a decrease, and we'll certainly get back to you because this is a priority for us to continue to make sure that we have pedestrian safety, we do our traffic studies, we deal with congestion, and so on. I just want to remind you that my door is open. You can come visit me, email me, call me, and I was criticized at the fall town meeting for not putting up a picture of Selena, so here she is.[870.04][870.04](laughter) (applause).
Thank you very much. And now the planning board through its chairperson, Heather Ronmerring. Ms. Ronmerring?
Sounds good. Thank you. Thank you, town meeting moderator. I am the current chair of the planning board. However, the report I am providing you is more a report on the dedication and work that was completed under the planning board's previous chair, Deabgerius. Under state law and/or the town's charter, it is the planning board's responsibility to review the resources, possibilities, and needs of the town. We also regulate the subdivision of land and are charged with reporting on all proposals for zoning bylaws and amendments to you, the town meeting. However, before we present any zoning bylaws or amendments to you, we undertake a hearing and public input process. We are also the permit granting authority for the Center Business District, but we will go into more depth on that with Articles 2 through 11. It is in this report to town meeting that I will review the current substantial projects that are ongoing and relate to the development and our planning for your knowledge beyond those stated by those who previously presented before me. Highland Avenue, located north of Winchester Hospital at the corner of Highland and Dana Road, referred to also as Abbey Road, has an approved subdivision and development agreement on it. It doesn't like me. There you go. See if it works. So it has a development agreement on it, and work for the subdivision has begun. The land near North Border Road, which many of town meeting members refer to as part of the Fells, has been secured and is owned by, now by the town. Any consideration for the development of that land would be reviewed by the select board, and we require town meeting's approval. The land that is at the corner of Washington and Swanton Street that previously had a proposal for a CVS pharmacy is currently under a purchase and sale agreement. An initial conversation with the developer and the neighborhood is tentatively planned to take place in May. 735 Main Street, the land where the former and historical Margaret Mahoney House was located at the corner of Skilling's and Main currently has an application for two commercial units, a total of approximately two thousand square feet of commercial space combined, eight residential units above, and has no affordable housing components to it. It is under review by the Zoning Board of Appeals, the ZBA, under special permit and site plan. The applicant would also need approval by the select board as their proposal includes a modification to the intersection of Skilling's and Main, which is town land. River Street. River Street is a one hundred and forty-seven unit project, one hundred and ten market rate, and thirty-seven affordable rate rentals located off of Cross Street in the north section of town. Is currently being reviewed by Mass Housing. If Mass Housing approves the project's eligibility, then the owner can apply thereafter to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a permit, as the ZBA will be the permit granting authority for that project. Fells Hardware, 654 Main Street. The application for the site of Fells Hardware was withdrawn by the applicant. In response, the town planner has received confirmation from the owner's legal team that they are compiling a new team and hope to meet the zoning bylaws and regulations governing Section 7.3 of the zoning bylaws. The planning board is really excited to work with the team when they are ready prior to them filing their application. 3640 Elmwood. You may have noticed that behind the Fells Hardware on Elmwood is a brand-new complex going in. It will have fourteen residential units, including an affordable component. Which leads me to the Center Business District. Since town meeting approved the new zoning bylaws for the Center Business District, we have seen ten applications. It is a far difference from the one application in the many years prior to the rezone. The goal of the rezoning was to promote mixed-use retail and residential, add design guidelines, protect historical resources, and revitalize existing buildings while aiming for the units to come in the next ten to fifteen years. So far to date, we have twenty-one new residential units permitted in the downtown, including affordable units. Commercial spaces have been revitalized, like Park Street, and we have even seen additional of outdoor dining like at TWK, the Waterfield Kitchen. Moving on to our planning responsibilities, the completion of the master plan is our primary goal going forward in fiscal year 2020 and has four components. One, an analysis of existing conditions that builds on past and current plans with the most current available data. Two, a ten-year community vision with measurable goals to support the vision. Three, specific regulatory programming and physical improvement strategies. And four, a five-year implementation action plan. We are moving through the second component, a ten-year community vision with measurable goals to support the vision of the master plan, and I'm happy to report we remain on schedule. Phase two is really what could Winchester's future be like. Unfortunately, due to the technical glitches we had before, we are going to have an activity for you to do prior to coming in. We will try to get it up and running so that you can do it during your break, and it's providing you questions that you can then text your answer to, and that data will be put into the information that we are gathering for the master plan. We also have opportunities for anyone to host a meeting using a meeting and a box kit. The planning board and the master plan steering committee made of town meeting representatives for each precinct is not the body that provides the opinions and desires of the town. It is really the residents. Please stay involved and join the conversation if you have not. You can join at courb.co/winchester or by attending the Wrightlock Farms Mother's Days Plant Sale on Saturday, May 11th, or a table at Town Day on June 1st. We also welcome anyone to attend any of our meetings, and you can reach any member of the planning board and the town planner with any questions or concerns you may have about land use at planningboard@winchester.us. Thank you so much for your time and for all of your service to our community, everyone.[1278.11][1278.11](applause).
Thank you very much, Ms. Ronmerring. It's moved in seconded that the reports to the town officers and finance committee be received and filed. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We are now going to take a break to meet in our precincts. Each precinct needs to meet. The town clerk informs me that the precinct captains have been informed of that. We will be in recess to allow those meetings to take place until 9:00 PM. That gives you fourteen minutes to patronize the Girl Scouts table and elect officers in each precinct. We'll be in recess until 9:00 PM. Thank you.
Which one is it, Brian? Ready when you are. John? Ready? I'm ready. Evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to Wind Cam's coverage of this first session of Winchester's Spring 2019 Town Meeting here on April 29th. I'm Alan Idon. Let's recap what has happened so far. Again, as traditional, the first part of the town meeting is hearing reports of the town boards and committees after the Girl Scouts Troop the Colors. We heard first from Board of Health, the chairman of the Board of Health, talking about vaccinations and infectious diseases, disease control in Winchester, introduction or the second year of an HPV vaccine that was rather well-received, pneumonia vaccine, shingles vaccine, and thirteen hundred doses of flu vaccine. Talked about hazardous waste collection that'll be coming up this Saturday, the 4th of May at the transfer station, excuse me, at the DPW Yard, and about the work, ongoing work of the Coalition for the Safer Community. We heard from the chairman of the Library Board of Trustees thanking the town that they were maintain, able to maintain the library services in the current budget. She said they had two hundred and thirty-six thousand visits to the library this year, and more and more people are using the library's online services and loan of equipment. Again, thanking, she thanked the town and the town government for their strong support. We're next from Mariana Goloboff, the chairman of the Select Board, who began by thanking Lance Grendzibak for six years of service and Dave Arico for three years of service on the board. Susan Verdickio and Amy Shapiro are the two new elected members of the board as of March. Recapping, he said there was a, you know, obviously there was a ten million dollar override approved, of which two million dollars is aligned for capital projects and building stabilization. He said there's about three point three million dollars in excess reserved, so the town does not intend to use the full ten million, but will probably use up that three point three over the next between two and four years. Talked about climate change, the concerns, the ongoing concerns about flooding and flooding, flood mitigation in the town. Talked about some energy-saving projects using LED lighting and solar panels, saying the town is striving to net, to meet a net-zero greenhouse emission goal in the next few years, and a climate action plan will be, is planned to be put forward by November of this year. A housing production plan was approved. Still, he said we still need to get seventy-nine units done in the next two years to create a safe harbor against hostile 40B projects. He did say the Mass School Building Administration rejected our, the town's proposals for reconstruction funds for the Lynch and Morocco schools, but they plan to resubmit. There is a culvert of the Morocco School area that still needs to be funded, and the MBTA redesign of the downtown train station is moving forward. We heard next from the Finance Committee Chair, said the original override was twelve million dollars. That was trimmed to ten before the election. He said the town has a one hundred and twenty-eight point three million dollar budget. Four point seven in operating and two in capital funds are being spent of the override in the first year. He touched on pension liability concerns, said that the town was fortunate to maintain their health insurance increase at three percent and is keeping about ten point three percent cash in reserves. School committee chair thanked the voters for voting an override by a vote of two to one. Talked about the negotiated eight point nine percent raise for the teachers over the next four years and the goal of the school committee to maintain reasonable class sizes. Touched on the diverse community in the school, and one sign of that was two sections of Mandarin, Chinese language. There's an increase in the number of counselors in the school. She said the largest kindergarten class in ten years is coming in this fall, and that the phase two of the McCall Expansion Project is underway. Lisa Wong, Winchester's town manager, was up next. Talked about, again, a housing production plan that was approved. The code of bylaws is in the process of being updated. There is a field use study underway. Talked about fire chief John Nash retiring this fall, and they search for a replacement. Thirty percent of the design of the MBTA station is completed this time. There'll be some public hearings for that. She showed a budget, bid and construction schedule that is on the town's website. She said the town has received about five hundred thousand dollars in grants, and there are some concerns, great concerns about recycling costs, which are currently about ten dollars a ton. It is anticipated a huge increase in that, possibly to as much as sixty dollars a ton in the next two years, so there's a lot of study on reducing the waste in the town. She also touched on ongoing efforts for pedestrian and traffic safety within the town of Winchester. And last, before the break, we heard from the chairman of the planning board, talked about the- The town meeting members will take their seats, and the meeting will come to order. The members will please take their seat, and the meeting will come to order. If the newly-elected members of the town meeting could please rise and take the oath written on the screen, repeating after me, aye, do solemnly swear that I will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties of the office to which I have been elected, in accordance with the laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and the Charter and Bylaws of the Town of Winchester. Thank you very much. This brings us to Article Two in the Spring Town Meeting. The article being brought by the Planning Board, a Planning Board article requiring a two-thirds vote. Under Article Two, which appears on Page Two of the blue-covered 2019 Spring Annual Town Meeting booklet, an article to see if the town will vote to delete Section 7.3.1.5.2 Para N3 of the CBD Review Subcommittee of the Winchester Zoning Bylaw in its entirely, in its entirety, and replace it with the following, or take any other action relation there. Two, it's moved and seconded that the town approve Article Two as printed in the warrant on behalf of the proponents under Article Two, the Chairperson of the Winchester Planning Board, Heather Von Mary. Ms. Von Mary.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So, we felt, the Planning Board felt that it was best to start with a general overview of what all these articles are about, and then go into specifically the articles that we have before you today, to try to make it more streamlined of a process going through all these articles, and expedient as possible for you as well. So, the main objectives of the proposed bylaw changes that you have before you today is to clarify and simplify the bylaw, modify requirements for submitted plans, add a review process in the permit application for large new structures or additions in GBD I, II, and III, and seek an appropriation for the master plan, which is later on in the article list. So, there are multiple different types of projects. There is as-of-right, and there is special permit and variance. A lot of times, people are using as-of-right incorrectly, so I want to talk to you a little bit about what an as-of-right project actually is. An as-of-right project is a proposed structure which complies with the Winchester zoning bylaws, dimensional requirements, and standards. As-of-right projects can have a review process put on them, which we call a site plan review. There are pros and cons to having that review process in place. One of the pros of not having that review process is an expedite, expedites the permit process. However, there are cons with not having a review process on that, on the, as-of-right project. Those include that large projects without a review process have a high probability of negatively impacting our community. The projects are not reviewed for drainage or water infiltration, and the public and all boards and committees and town employees, specifically engineering and planning, do not have a review for impact specifically for traffic, safety, access, and environmental concerns, which you have heard this evening by many boards and commissions, saying are an issue we are having with our town. The site plan review is as-of-right projects where the following are proposed. This is a general overview of when we use site plan review. When there are large changes of use or square footage on vacant land, or large changes to topography, substantial expansions of existing buildings in this business district, and houses of a certain size in the residential districts as well. Many of us, if we do an addition on our house and exceeds a certain square footage, we go through a site plan review process for our own homes. Reasonable conditions can be required to help the project meet the site plan review criteria. The site plan review criteria is this list. What you look for in the site plan review is character, materials, and scale are not unreasonably departed from the neighborhood, the historical resources, we're looking at the volume of cut and fill, the removal of trees, the impact on the wetland vegetation displaced, soil erosion, air and water pollution, storm water management. We're also looking at pedestrian vehicle safety. We're looking for adequate, adequate access for fire and emergency. We're looking for scenic view impacts, visual intrusion, glare from the lights, contamination of groundwater, and really are looking for that, they are ensuring that they comply with the zoning bylaws. Without a site plan review on a project, just like if you take a permit to the building department, you give them the permit, they review it inside that department, and they can sign off it and turn it over. There's no notification to anyone outside of that department. The other option is a spite, special permit review. This is a different option that is out there for the town to use. Special permits are required for a number of development proposals that have the potential to largely impact and/or the vicinity. The big difference between a site plan review and a special permit review is that special permits can be denied. However, it is much more common in Winchester for projects to be approved with conditions rather than denied. The special permit review criteria, in addition to the site plan review criteria, includes community needs, traffic flow and safety, utilities, impact on neighborhood character, the adequacy of proposed screening and buffering, impacts on the natural environment, fiscal impacts, and impacts on historic resources. For the site plan review special permit, the, the Planning Board is for the Center Business District, which I'll show you where that is in town. For everything else throughout the entire town, the special permit and site plan review board is actually the Zoning Board of Appeals. It is not the Planning Board. So, most of the articles we'll be going over today are GBD I, II, and III. GBD I is a commercial district, which is off to the right. It is all the miscellaneous, random place lots around here. If you notice, it is completely engaged and engulfed with RG 6.5, which is the minimum lot size in those, is 6,500 square feet. GB II runs from Stop &amp; Shop, which is right here, starts at the edge of Skilling's and Main, and runs all the way up to Swanton Street, which is right here. GBD III starts at Swanton Street and then moves all the way to the Woburn Line, and it follows all Main Street all the way through. The Center Business District, which is under the special permit granting authority of the Planning Board, is really the center of our town. It starts at the Stop &amp; Shop, which is up here, and is all embedded in, with the Museum District, which is the Griffin Museum, the East Core, and stops short of Town Hall. Also, you have the post office is the edge over here, the train station, and all the commercial districts that line on Church Street. It also goes up towards Elmwood, which is here, here's where the Fells Hardware is, and also up, this is Park, in there. So, now I'm going to let Brian take over, starting with Article Number Two.
Mr. Zakely, the Town Planner, on Article Two. Mr. Zakely.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good evening, town meeting. So, Article Two, this has to do with the CBD Review Subcommittee, so we're just talking about the Center Business District and its relation to the Planning Board. The objective here is to reflect the votes and feedback The objective here is to reflect the votes and feedback of the entire Design Review Committee and Historical Commission for all projects in the CBD, not just a subset of these groups. The projects that are addressed by this change are all site plan and design review projects in the Center Business District. So currently, the Planning Board relies on this five-member board called the CBDRS. They perform design review for projects in the Center Business District, and it's made up of two to three members of Historical Commission and then two to three members of the Design Review Committee. It depends on what type of project it is, what type of building. If it's a historic resource, there's three historic members. If it's not a historic resource, there's three design review members. So right now, only two or three members of each of these seven-member groups. So both the DRC and both the Design Review and Historical Commission are seven-member groups. They have many different specialties within the group. But only two or three of the members of each of that seven are actually represented in this CBDRS. So we're not really getting the experience of all the members, which is giving us limited information for what's available for review. We're still also, in addition to a report from the CBDRS, we're getting a report from the rest of the Historical Commission and the rest of the Design Review. So now we're getting three reports instead of one report. However, the solution we have decided is to use just the standard procedure that's used for all special permits and site plan and design review, and just receive comments from the entirety of each board, just the way that the ZBA works. So the ZBA works is that they get comments from the Planning Board, Design Review, Historical Commission, and then the Fire Department, Police Department, and any other departments that would want to weigh in. But the point is that they're always getting a report from Design Review, Historical Commission, and the Planning Board. By taking, by using this solution, by going back to the way it essentially used to be, it's still a streamlined process compared to the current ZBA process. The ZBA has to still hear from the Planning Board, Historical Commission, and Design Review. So the developer, or builder, or homeowner has to go to three meetings and then ZBA. The ZBA is not in the picture for the CBDRS. So now they're only going to Historical Commission and Design Review. So even with this change, it's still more of a streamlined process than the way that the ZBA currently works, because the ZBA is not part of the Center Business District. This is the language that's being used in order to essentially disband the CBDRS and use the current process that we have for all other projects for where there is a special permit granting authority. It gives a certain amount of time that they can respond. So if we don't hear anything within 35 days, then we assume that there are no issues. So this is the exact wording that's used throughout the zoning bylaw in other situations for special permit granting authorities. That's all I have on this article.
Thank you, Mr. Zakelli. A procedural vote, the Winchester Chamber of Commerce, through its president, Craig Robey, has asked to speak on these articles. Mr. Robey is a member resident of the town, but not a member of the town meeting. And accordingly, in accordance with our procedure, we'll need to take a vote to allow him to speak. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Further on Article 2 in response, Craig Robey from the President of the Winchester Chamber of Commerce. Mr. Robey.
Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. At the last Chamber of Commerce meeting, we took a vote, and we reviewed all the articles, 2 through 11, and looked at all the pros and cons of them, and unanimously opposed the articles. And right now, I'd like to talk a little bit about Article 2, but in the effort of time, talk about a few others here as well, so I won't be up every single article. But Article 2, the way it's set up right now is that, like he said, there's a five-person committee, subcommittee, and we feel that's certainly enough voices from both committees to give a full review of the project. By having both committees fully review the project, the Design Committee and the Historical Committee, that just adds more time and conflict. So when you've got the Historical Committee making their opinions and the Design Review Committee, you have two people competing with their opinions, and that just adds more time and more cost to the process. And therefore, it slows down the process to get things built in town, and it adds more time. So it's not encouraging development in the center of town, it just adds more bureaucracy to the whole process. So that is something that we oppose formally from the Chamber of Commerce. I'd like to address a couple others here as well at the same time. Article 4, by lowering the threshold for the site plan review from 15,000 feet to 7,500 feet. 15,000 feet, I mean 7,500 feet is a pretty small lot. So essentially, you're going to be requiring every project to have a full site plan review. The full site plan review is the Historic Commission, the Design Review Committee, the Planning Board, which therefore gives your opinion to the Board of Appeals. So you have four different committees, pretty much giving their separate conflicting opinions on every single project. That adds a lot of time and a lot of money to the process, makes it very cumbersome to build in town. So you're adding three to six months to the process, and therefore, a lot of cost. It's not really encouraging development in town, it makes it easy for people to build in town. Article 5 talks about the as-of-right height, and reduces it from 45 to 40 feet. Essentially, that's requiring anything less than three stories. So a two-story building is the only thing that can be as-of-right to build. A three-story building would need to have approval by the committee, and it requires a special permit to get anything over two stories. Once again, that's also a bit burdensome and a lot of bureaucracy to get a basic project built. Articles 7 and 8, the big thing in here is the elevator penthouse. The elevator penthouse essentially is a space above the elevator that projects above the roof. That's roughly about five feet above the roof for the elevator to function the building. So therefore, you can only have an elevator in a two-story building without getting approved with special permit. So that is very burdensome as well. And so that is something that we oppose. It pretty much requires anything over two-story building to have a special review for special Excuse me, brought my water flask. All right. And Articles 9, 10, and 11 show that all rooftop equipment will be shown on the preliminary documents for approval. So essentially, you have a sketch of a building of what it's going to look like to the neighborhood, how it's going to impact the neighborhood, but you have to have all the equipment that's on top of the roof in place for approval process. To do that, it requires a full mechanical design of the building, which therefore, if any of you have done any quoting, you just can't kind of have an idea or ballpark. You have to have the building pretty much done and built, which requires tens of thousands of dollars and a lot more time to have that done. So it's very burdensome for anyone to come up with a proposal for a project which might not even get approved. So by having that approval for the rooftop, to have all the rooftop equipment, once again, that's another article, that's Articles 9, 10, and 11, that another bureaucracy and just another thing that adds more dollars and time to any project being built in the town. You know, in reality, the only way that we can increase revenues in town, we're limited. We're limited because we only have 2.5% that we can increase every year, and our costs are more than that, as we just discovered with the override. So the only way to do that is by increasing our tax base through building new buildings and increasing the property tax base. These do not make it easier to increase the property tax base, and it adds more tax burden on the residents, and therefore puts more burden on the infrastructure facilities in the town of Winchester. Also, by making it more burdensome, it makes it more desirable for a builder to build a 40B project. They can circumvent all these regulations by just building a 40B, and there's no control over that, or very limited local control over that, as you know. And you also know, as in Article 26, in the middle of a multi-year master planning process, all these topics that are in Articles 2 through 11 could very easily be part of the master building process and really shouldn't be part of individual changes to the bylaws. I think, we think the master plan should be sufficient for making these changes and be a part of the overall picture in the town. And just keep in mind that these proposals affect every single person in this town, not only the building owners or the landowners, but also you, the taxpayers, and the builders in town, and everyone here. And they're not beneficial for all those reasons that I just mentioned. So for those reasons, the Chamber of Commerce opposes Articles 2 through 11. And we can talk about 3 and 6, because I think 3 is out and 6 we're okay with, but that's all we have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Robey. Further on the question. Yes, Mr. Miller.
Peter. I just have a, I guess I'm opposed to this. I maybe misheard what Brian said, but the way I read what's written is that the SPGA shall consult with the Historical Commission and the Design Review Committee. And I just think that's language that's ambiguous, and I don't know. I consult with my children when they were kids. They consult with me. I don't know what that means. The other problem I have with at the end of the, near the end of the first paragraph of proposed Paragraph 3, it's the time clock begins from a complete filing from an applicant. And I just think that this is, this reminds me of Charles Dickens, you know, the Department of Circumlocution, where, you know, you go around in circles. You know, it's not, if there's going to be a limitation, it ought to be clear when the period begins, and I don't think that consult is very clear. I don't know what that means, and I don't think we should be putting applicants into the world where they don't understand what's happening. That discourages applications. So I would be opposed to Article 2.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Yes, Mr. MacTosh.
I've got a question to the moderator for Brian, this is a quick follow-up. Could you take us through the process a little better than 35 days? In other words, I want to make a change to a building in the Central Business District. I need to go in front of different committees now, but each committee meets on a different week, and there's a 35-day clock. When I go in front of the first committee, is that when the 35-day clock starts or after? Please clarify for all of us, Mr. Moderator, through to Brian.
Thank you, Mr. Zakelli, in response to the town meeting members' question.
So first, I'll say that this is nearly identical to the language on how special permits work for the ZBA. The project starts, the time starts as soon as a full filing is given, is applied for. So it gets stamped in, it's fully there, that's day one. So there needs to be a hearing with the Planning Board, or, sorry, with the special permit granting authority, in this case, the Planning Board, has to be a hearing with the SPGA within 35 days. Typically, what happens, either in the CBD or outside with the ZBA, is that that first hearing happens with the SPGA somewhere around day 30 to 35. It's the previous weeks that they're meeting with all of the advisory boards. So that's the way it's been for many years, and that's what we want to do. Again, the word, and the word "shall consult," this is all the same language that we use in the ZBA. This was actually advised for us by legal counsel to use the same language as we have in the zoning board, is in the zoning board special permit process.
Thank you, Mrs. Zakelli. Further on the question, Mr. Hart.
I've got a question for you, Mr. Moderator, to the town planner. You know, when the CBD district was enacted not so long ago, this was thought through, and this joint committee was formed just for the purpose of efficiency, to combine the two committees in this joint committee so there would just be the one meeting. Could I ask, you know, what's been wrong with that thus far, or why do we need to revert back to the method, I guess, as you used in the ZBA process? Thanks.
Mr. Zakelli, in response to the town meeting members' question.
So there's two seven-member boards, that portions of them are going to the CBDRS. What we were experiencing was, we would get a report from the CBDRS, there would be a specific vote. Let's say two members from Design Review were there, but the other five members of Design Review, let's say that there was a landscape architect or a specific type of architect on the Design Review that really could have, or that the review could have benefited for that one specific person. So that's why we have these seven-member groups, because there's, each person has their own expertise. The idea is that when we were receiving these reports, we were, the Historical Commission and the Design Review by themselves were giving us reports as well. So basically, the streamlining process turned out to not be streamlined at all, and we're trying to be as nimble as possible to try to make the process better. We still think it's one meeting less than what the current ZBA uses. The idea that we had, flat out, didn't work, and we want to change it.
Thank you very much, Mr. Zakelli. Further on the question, the moderator senses the need to appoint tellers, and accordingly, the moderator would ask that Mr. Schimetz, Ms. Quinn, Ms. Sarah, oh, I'm sorry. It's always a good idea. I'm sorry about that, Mr. Zakelli. We have recommendations from the Select Board.
So the Select Board voted four to one to recommend a no vote on this article. We feel like the original intent of the CBDRS was to, for efficiency on projects within the Central Business District. That has worked. Ten developments in the Central Business District have happened. Before the CBD was established, there weren't as many developments. We heard during the override campaign about the need for economic development, and we are very concerned about that and what putting barriers to building. Buildings that are still going to be reviewed, they're still going to be reviewed by members of both the Design Review Committee and the Historical Commission. It's just, it's a subset, it's a subcommittee from them to form the CBDRS. And so we voted four one to oppose this article.
Thank you, Ms. Goybel. Five pauses. Yes, Mr. Lemonge.
Jack Lemonge, Chair of the Historical Commission. A couple of points, with the risk of reiterating what Mr. Zakelli has already said. I honestly do believe this would be a streamlining of the current setup. When this bylaw was passed, I personally was skeptical of this meshing of two committees in actual practice, and I've sat in on every single one of those meetings. It has been awkward and unwieldy, and coming back to the Historical Commission after some of these decisions, we've gotten a lot of feedback from the members who were disappointed with the decision and felt like their opinions were not sought or offered. So when this bylaw was passed, I saw this almost as an experiment. Let's see if this works, and I don't think it works. And to Brian's point, Mr. Zakelli's point, we're already doing this on site review plans and special permits for the ZBA, and I don't see a lot of difference, and I don't really think this is going to slow the process at all. We have to make these decisions within that 35-day time span anyway. So I just think this makes a lot more sense.
Thank you very much. Yes, Mr. MacTosh with a follow-up.
I'm sorry, this is for, I guess, planning board, Brian, regardless of whatever way. I would have thought we cast a ball about historic, any building after 1941 had to go through historic review. So I'm wondering about the aspects, our downtown, I think almost every building is after, is before 1941, not everyone, but many. So what is the, how does it work? You're saying there's historic review, but I would have thought there had to be historic review for any building before 41 anyway.
Mr. Zakelli, in response to the town meeting members' question.
So I believe you're referring to the General Bylaw, Chapter 14, the preservation of historic structures, which is not in the zoning, but that only deals with, and there's only a review for historic structures if there's a total demolition. So it's a totally different review process. That's the Historical Commission, they have their own charge to do that. It's a different review. This is a design review, which maybe there is demolition involved, but most of the time, almost all the time so far in the past four years, there hasn't been demolition. It's either a design change or an addition or something like that. So two different bylaws, two different types of reviews. The one you're talking about is, I guess, full demolition completely.
Thank you very much. Yes. This guy's getting a workout today with a microphone.
Sherri Winkleman, Precinct 8. I would just like to put my word in for support of this article. We've heard that the boards and commissions that are involved in this review process, they all think that it doesn't work. The Board of Select, the Select Board feels that the wording may be nice, but they don't seem to be taking into effect what is reality. If all of these committees are reviewing anyway, why don't we state it clearly and have this permitting process work the same way? All of our other permitting processes... have this permitting process work the same way all of our other permitting processes do?
Thank you very much, Ms. Winkleman. Yes, Mr. Richard.
It sounds as if the debate is whether the current process works or not, and it sounds as if that depends, who is it here to work for? It seems like the people who are most governed by it, the Chamber of Commerce unanimously oppose this. It doesn't seem to work for the regulators, but it works better than the proposed system for those who would be regulated. And I would take their opinion, give it a lot of weight, given that any legitimate regulation, any decent exercise of governmental powers starts with the consent of those governed. So, I mean, the idea that the people who own the land in this property, in this district, who rent property there, who do business there, think that it's onerous, it doesn't give me much comfort that the regulators don't think it's onerous, or this will be better for you. Well, the you have spoken, they say it won't be. So to me, that closes it, so I'm against this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Richard. Further on the question. Yes, Ms. Welch.
I'll just be very brief. I'm the minority vote on the Select Board on this article. I just wanted to comment, first of all, thank you for all the attention that's been given to this article. It may seem kind of complicated in a lot of ways, but obviously very important issues and there's been some very constructive discussion and some really great points raised. I just wanted to point out a few that came to my mind. I'm a former Chair of the Planning Board and was involved in helping to draft the Center Business District bylaws. And just a few comments. I respect all the comments of those who have stood against this article and, for example, the last town meeting member who spoke. I would just point out that if this isn't passed, like the current system essentially gives less review for the Center Business District. And if you did just sort of like a random survey of most people in town, they highly value the Center Business District. In fact, they highly value the Center Business District for many reasons, including not only the historical quality and feel, but also even buildings that aren't historic, but just the way they sort of sit into the, the kind of the landscape of that specific area. So what this is doing, first of all, this is, the Planning Board is the special permit granting authority for the Center Business District. That's the law. And the Planning Board is respectfully saying, hey, we can do this in a more streamlined fashion. You just heard from someone whose Chair of the Historic Commission also agreeing. So respectfully, this is for the interests of town center, not only for development, but it's not just, with all due respect to the Chamber, because I obviously highly value everything that they have to say, but with all due respect, this isn't just bureaucratic. I think that term was used often in the Speaker's comments, which were very helpful and constructive comments, but I don't think that's the right word. When we talk about review in the planning sense, it's not just bureaucratic, it's not because people have nothing else to do. They're just looking at a project with their areas of expertise and moving it along as a town planner indicated within a specific defined period of time. So I'll just end by saying that the rest of town, everywhere except for Center Business District, right now is reviewed, as Mr. Zakelli said, by historic and also by design, excuse me, design review. But that's not the case for Center Business District right now. There's this species that was created for purposes at the time that seemed to make sense, but hasn't been working. So all the Planning Board is saying right now is, let's unify this, have the same system throughout town. That's all this article is about. So with all due respect to every single person who has commented, because everybody's views are legitimate and important and very acknowledged, but I would just point out that this is, the Planning Board is the special permit granting authority in Center Business District. All they're saying is, hey, can we have the review set up similar to what it is outside of Center Business District? How it is with the ZBA? So in any event, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Welch. Before we take further questions, let's get back to the moderator's procedural problems. So I need to appoint some tellers. Mr. Shymets, Ms. Quinn, Ms. Sarah, and Mr. Johnson, if you could please rise. Raise your right hand. Do you agree to solemnly provide this town meeting with an accurate and complete count of the vote as tally? Thank you very much. So, Mr. Shymets, if you could count your section and the Select Board. Ms. Quinn and Ms. Sarah, with respect to your section. Mr. Clemson, could you raise your hand? Thank you. Mr. Clemson and everything to the right of him will constitute the section counted by Ms. Quinn. Ms. Sarah, everything to the left of Mr. Clemson will be your section. Mr. Johnson, if you could count your section and the Finance Committee. Okay. Yes, Ms. Quinn?
He is to the left of Mr. Clemson, so he'll be counted by Ms. Sarah.
Unless you want, there's a special citizen of the year thing, you can, you can make your choice, you know? We already had to let the chamber speak on account of that, no? Okay. Forward with the debate. Further on the debate? Yes, ma'am. I'm sorry. The back row first and then we'll come forward. My apologies.
Thank you. I know the last thing anyone wants to do is keep talking about this, but I just want to bring up a perspective that hasn't been offered, which is all of the residents of the town. I just moved here, spent more than I ever thought I would spend on a home because I wanted to live in Winchester for many, many years. And a big part of that is the culture and the feel of this town. And so with respect to the Central Business District and the rest of these planning-related articles, it's not just for the regulated, the builders. I think it's really important that we generate more development in this town and that developers have a good process, that we can continue that investment. But that does have to get balanced against the, I don't know, billions of dollars of homeownership investment in this town. That's valid too, and those things need to be adequately balanced. I'm not even offering my opinion on whether I think this does that or these articles do that, but that needs to be considered as well.
Thank you very much. Further on the question, you can just come down a few rows right here, the town meeting member.
Thank you. I have a question that I can possibly pose through the moderator to the Speaker for the Chamber, and that is, was this unanimous vote the entire body of the Chamber or the Board of the Chamber? And how much of the Chamber members in general were involved in expressing their opinions on this? That's the first question. And the second question is, what was done by the Chamber to work with the Planning Board on the development of these warrant articles moving forward as they're listed by open meeting, that those are going to be discussed? So there's ample knowledge that these are going to be discussed and there's an opportunity for them to try and work collaboratively on something that works for them, the Planning Board, and for the town and the businesses. Thank you.
Thank you. I do not believe that Mr. Rabe is still in the auditorium because he did tell me he had to leave. So unless there's somebody else here from the Chamber leadership who wants to speak to that, I think those questions will remain unanswered. Further on the question. All those in favor of the motion as presented by the Planning Board, two-thirds vote required, please rise and the tellers will count. All those opposed, please rise. Five? members required to pass, eighty-two having voted in the affirmative, the motion fails. This brings us to Article Three. Article Three, under Article Three, it's moved and seconded. Article Three being indefinitely postponed. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Article Three is indefinitely postponed. This brings us to Article Four. Article Four brought by the Planning Board under Article Four to see if the town will vote to amend Section 9.5.1 of the Winchester zoning bylaw. It's moved and seconded that the town approve Article Four as printed in the warrant and the particular material under 9.5.1 appears on page four of the motion booklet. On behalf of Article Four, the Planning Board, through the Town Planner, Mr. Zakelli. Mr. Zakelli.
It appears the Chamber took all my notes. But I'll go forward. So Article Four.
You're young, Mr. Zakelli, you still have a good memory.
Yeah, I'll keep, I'll just try to keep going. We'll be here till about 2:00 AM, is that cool? All right. Article Four. So we want to add a review of projects with significant impact in the GBD I, II, and III. The projects that are addressed by this change are a new use or a construction or expansion of a structure on a parcel between 7,500 and 15,000 square feet. Currently, if it's over 15,000 square feet, there's site plan review. We're now going to be trying to change that to instead of it being 15,000 square feet, it's 7,500. Now, this is the size of the lot, this is not the size of the house, which is the way the residential districts work. So the general concern. So in the recent past, Winchester's seen this increased amount of larger structures on lots that are less than 15,000 square feet in the GBD II and III. Such structures should be reviewed for their impact on safety, the neighborhood, traffic and circulation, some things that the town manager just recently talked about in terms of that we need more review of. Currently, the FAR in the GBD I, II, and III is 1.0. That means that on a lot of 15,000 square feet, you could build a structure that's 15,000 square feet, it's 15,000 square foot big without a review. That's the way it currently exists right now. It triggers 15,000 square feet with an FAR I, so if you're at 14, nine, you can build that structure by right. So this is just a slide showing kind of the closeness of the mixed-use nature of GBD II and III. So there's lots of single-family and two-family residences, intermixed between commercial and multifamily. So there are about 25 parcels that are in the GBD II and III that are between 7,500 and 15,000. So that's 25 new parcels that would be under review, and there's about 10 in the GBD I. So it's 35 total parcels. The GBDs are pretty much smack dab in the middle of all of the residential zones. So, oh, sorry, I'm just going to go back here for a sec. So the concept that a 15,000-square-foot building could be built without a review right next to a single-family home that's 3,600 square feet that needs review. So you have a single-family home, family home in the RG, it's 3,600 square feet directly next door, you can put a 15,000-square-foot structure without a review. This doesn't seem to make a lot of sense for the people that live there, the business owners that are, not necessarily the property owners, but the business owners as well. So this new provision still allows a building twice the size of a residential home to be built without a review. So you could have a 3,600-square-foot home, that would need a review. Right next door, it could be 7,200 square feet and it still wouldn't be a review. So that's with the change, you could still do double the size of a residential structure. This is just explaining where we were here. Since this is in the GBD I, II, and III, this is all the zoning board of appeals. So the Planning Board is not in control of these areas. They are the, obviously, the SPGA just for the Center Business District. So the actual change in terms of how it looks in the zoning bylaw is simply a changing from 15,000 square feet for a trigger for site plan review, putting that down to 7,500 square feet.
Thank you very much, Mr. Zakelli. And we have a recommendation from the Select Board.
Yeah, the Select Board voted unanimously to support this article. We feel that it is appropriate, the design review process is appropriate to place reasonable conditions on buildings in the general business districts. These are buildings that are going to be there for a very long time, hopefully, and as such, they should be reviewed, especially since those business districts are about residential properties.
Thank you, Ms. Goyevov. Mr. Conti, further on the question.
Okay. Again, thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm going to echo the comments of the Chamber of Commerce on this proposal. Winchester has a reputation of being a difficult place to do business. That's one of the reasons why we have the tax rate that we do. Over 90% of our tax revenue comes from residential property. By enacting this proposal, which would require a site plan review for very small lots, 7,500 square feet is not a big lot in the commercial district. That's a small lot. Adding design review to that increases the cost of development and thereby discourages further commercial development. We need more commercial development badly. Residential property owners are paying the bills in this town and we need, residential property sends kids to school, frankly, and that's what, that's three-quarters of our budget. You know, we need more commercial development in this town and by doing this, we're making commercial development more expensive and we're telling developers, you're going to go through hell to go through this. We know what the design review process is like. You know, it makes everything a political football, frankly. And that discourages development. We need commercial development to control our tax rate. Everybody complains about, you know, that we don't have enough revenue, while by discouraging commercial development, you're discouraging the revenue that we need to make this town run. And therefore, I ask that we think twice about this and vote against the Planning Board's proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Conti. Ms. Winkleman, further on the question.
I would like to point out that GBD I, II, and III are all mixed-use areas, both residential and business. Very few of the new developments that have gone in have had business. Little, if any, in those developments, they've all been residential. And that is the direction that development has been going. And so the notion that if we don't have to review business development, that's somehow going to invite developers, I think, is a farce.
Thank you, Ms. Winkleman. Further on the question, all those in favor, please rise and the tellers will count. Thirteen. Ms. Sarah, don't forget to count the Fink on, please. Okay. Yeah, sorry. Never mind that instruction. The large man with the beard. The Lerner'd man with the beard. A handsome man with a beard.
Now, this is great, because I want the smart vote tabulation, so keep doing it this way, and then you'll all give me the money, so I can buy it.
Twenty, how many? Twenty-six. All those opposed, please rise. One hundred and thirty members of the town meeting having voted, eighty-seven needed to pass, one hundred and sixteen voting in affirmative, Article Four passes. Ms. Vaughn Marying, did you have a motion?
There's some people that are sitting behind you saying the count was wrong.
Then I would suggest that they make a motion for reconsideration. Is there a second?
It's a motion to reconsider the negative vote on Article Two. It's been made, a motion to reconsider. It's been seconded under the bylaws of the Town of Winchester, the town meeting. The motion for reconsideration will be the first item for business at the next session of town meeting on Monday, May 6.
So this brings us to, Article Four has passed. This brings us to Article Five. What? No, not until, yeah. Article Five, under Article Five, brought by the Planning Board to see if the town will vote to amend Section 4.0, the table of dimensional requirements of the Winchester zoning bylaw. Under Article Five, it's moved and seconded that the town approve Article Five as printed in the warrant. The language appears on page five of the motion booklet. On behalf of the proponents, the Town Planner, Mr. Zakelli. Mr. Zakelli?
Article Five. This is to review larger developments in the GBD Two, GBD One, Two, and Three without changing the maximum potential height. The projects that are addressed by this change are projects in the GBD One, Two, and Three that are above two and a half stories or above forty feet. So currently, in white is what the zoning bylaw has. You can build up to three full stories and up to forty-five feet in the GBD One, Two, and Three. The proposed change is to say that the max height is still the same. The max height is still three full stories. You would still need a variance to go above that, so that's not changing. What's changing is the by-right height and the by-right, I'm sorry, the by-right height in stories and the by-right height in feet. The idea here is that a variance would still be required. The proposed change would allow the zoning board of appeals to review using the special permit review criteria. This is just as a note, the maximum housing height is forty feet right now. Because there's so much residential intermix with these districts, we really wanted to see more pedestrian-scale buildings in these areas, and the ones that are not pedestrian-scale, we would want to be able to review them. What are the special permit criteria? We went over these a little bit earlier. The biggest difference here between a special permit and site plan review is that special permits can be denied. Looking at all numbers one through eight, I'm not going to read them, we've already read them once, but what this will do was, would cause projects of significant size to be able to be reviewed by the zoning board of appeals.
Thank you, Mr. Zakelli. We have a recommendation from the Select Board.
The Select Board voted four to one in opposition to this article. We feel that the previous article, which sets the site plan review for the sections, GBDs One, Two, and Three, addresses the issues that are trying to be fixed by this article, and that taking away a floor by right, as Article Five does, is not necessary when we just passed additional site plan review that can help put reasonable, reasonable conditions on any development in these areas.
Thank you, Mr. Galiboff. Further on the question, Mr. McIntosh? I'm sorry. I'm calling you by the wrong name, but I'm pointing to you.
Yeah. Sorry. Quick one for, I think, Planning Board, I'm not sure. We've got a bunch of articles about changing zoning going on right now, or changing our zoning bylaws. We have a big committee right now looking at all those things for planning. I'm wondering why we're in a rush to pass the laws right now, and I just hope that you might elucidate us all, if that would be a word.
Mr. Zakelli, in response to the town meeting members' question asking for elucidation.
I can only promise so much. So I had it in a different note here. Okay. So I know it's what's up there, but it was on a different note. Anyway, the overhaul of the, so an overhaul of the GBD Two and Three is necessary. Everyone's in agreement, at least on the Planning Board, as well as many other people that live in that area. That could take one to two years, even with the master plan process that we're doing. We are experiencing development pressure in these areas specifically. So putting a review process in place now, therefore, makes sense. We want to provide impacted owners and businesses a forum to voice their concerns. The truth is that these buildings are going to be here for the next fifty to a hundred years, and while we overhaul the zoning in this area, we can't really afford to have these large projects built without a review at all, that doesn't take into consideration its neighbors', traffic, safety, all those things that we were talking about. So the idea is that you're a hundred percent right. We know that we need to overhaul it. This is, I don't like to use this word, but I'm going to say it, it's almost a stop-gap in between now and what we are actually, instead of, what most builders and also review authorities would want is a zoning that makes sense, so there is the least amount of review. That's essentially what you would want, is a blueprint for a developer to come in and be able to build something that makes sense. Reviews obviously add a little bit of uncertainty to that, and we understand that. However, we don't have the one to two years right now. We don't want to wait one to two years and have a number of buildings get built in the GBD Two and Three that are clearly out of scale, out of touch with that neighborhood. We're starting to see those out-of-touch buildings, and frankly, we don't like it.
Thank you, Mr. Zakelli. Further on the question, Ms. Winkelman.
A question to the Planning Board. Why is it felt necessary, given that the Select Board feels that this is just a redundant type of review for these particular buildings? Why does the Planning Board feel that this additional review is necessary for these particular properties?
Ms. Vaughn Marying, the Chair of the Planning Board, in response to the town meeting members' question.
So for GBD Two and Three specifically, there are single-family houses spread throughout that entire district. What this specifically does is it encourages the development to come in with by-rights, site plan review projects that are two and a half stories, which are more, much more in scale with what currently is there and what historically has been there in the housing market. Thereafter, if they want to go for that additional five feet on top of it, then with that, they should go for a site plan review, because that is so invasive on top of those single-story houses. And that's a lot of the housing stock that we talk about, that we want to maintain and that we want to encourage maintaining in our town, to keep the diverse housing stock. A lot of that is in GBD Two and Three. So one is in Two and Three, and one is the commercial. So why we're going for this, in addition to other things, is to deal with that. The other thing is, we also want to encourage roofs. We don't want flat boxes. And so by going for the two and a half stories, forty feet by right, we are looking at encouraging the more of the, it is better in scale with pedestrians that are walking along. And it also, if you go to the three-story versus the two and a half story, this three, two and a half story is still three usable floors with dormers and embedded in the roof line. When you go to three, you're looking at boxes, and they're maximizing. Then, in addition, all around there is also the RG 6.5, which their by-right height is forty. So anything above that will be very impinging upon all those neighborhoods all around the GBD Two and Three. So that is why we're recommending this for GBD Two and Three at this time, until we can further fully revet and redo GBD Two and Three zoning.
Thank you, Ms. Vaughn Marying.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Fellow town meeting members, let me remind you, this is a commercial district, or three different commercial districts. This is not a residential district. Yes, there are residences in those districts. However, anyone who, you know, the purpose of having a commercial district is to allow more intense development. You know, and what we're doing, but by the way, this is not for site plan review. This is asking for a special use permit. A special permit is very different from site plan review. A special permit requires a more-than-majority vote and imposes very significant conditions that undercut the fact that you're in a commercial district. You know, and again, this is going to discourage development, puts the development process through a lengthy process that requires substantial investment to go through. And, you know, we're cutting off badly-needed commercial development in Winchester. And we also, someone raised the point that, yes, that a lot of what's going on are residential developments in these areas. Well, you know, we also hear from everyone how we need more affordable housing, and more affordable housing means, you know, condos as opposed to single-family houses. Now, you can't have it both ways. Either you're for affordable housing, or you're not for affordable housing. And one of the places where you can build affordable housing in Winchester, you can't build it in those single-family districts. Too expensive. The only place you can get affordable housing in Winchester is in the commercial areas, by and large, unless you want to encourage more 40B developments, which is, as the Chamber of Commerce pointed out to us, is what you're going to have. If you make it too difficult to develop in commercial districts, like the GBD districts that we're faced with here, you're going to have, encourage people to go for 40B projects. Is that what we really want to encourage? I don't think so. So I would recommend that we vote this down. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Conti.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Amy Ren, Precinct Seven. I just have a quick question, seeing as though we're trying to, you know, compare apples and oranges here on Article Five and Four. What is the, do we have a number on anything that's under the seventy-five hundred square feet in these districts? How many people are really affected in this area?
Town meeting members' question, in response, Mr. Zakelli, the Town Planner, as to how many people are actually affected in this area.
So in the GBD Two and Three, in total, there's around a hundred and twenty or so parcels. This is looking at parcels that are between seventy-five hundred and fifteen thousand. That's twenty-five parcels in the GBD Two and Three, and ten parcels in the GBD One, for a total of thirty-five out of about a hundred and thirty-five.
Further on the question, Mr. Miller. I'm sorry, ma'am, just with a follow-up.
Maybe I didn't ask it correctly. What I'm thinking is, what I'm looking at here is if we're talking about, the Select Board has said that it's, you know, we're pretty much covering the issue in Article Four. How many people are under the seventy-five hundred, so that those are affected by this height requirement? Do you know what I mean?
Well, okay, so, but I guess it's because whether they're under seventy-five hundred or over seventy-five hundred, all of the buildings in the GBD One, Two, and Three would be affected by this article. This is the by-right height in all of them.
Correct. But those that we just passed will be under review over seventy-five hundred. So I'm asking, of those people that aren't affected by the seventy-five hundred, what are we looking at?
So the parcels that are between zero and seventy-five hundred?
Correct.
It's got, it's about a third. I don't know the exact parcel number, but it's not nothing. There's about, you know, somewhere between twenty and thirty parcels. I don't know the exact number, but not a ton.
Thank you, Mr. Galiboff. Mr. Miller, further on the question.
I have the same comment basically as I did before. I think the question in my mind is that, on a different article, the question is, what does the property owner do when they see this revised provision? And what it does is, it freezes them, because they're not sure whether, is it two and a half? Is it, should I do three? So what really the effect of this is, that it causes extra costs and freezes decision-making by the property owner. And I agree with the Board that the existing law accomplishes the same thing. All it does is create confusion about whether it's two and a half by right, or if you want to go to three stories or forty-five feet, you need a special permit and a completely different process. So what you're talking about is a big, large expense for the uncertainty of not making it clear upfront what you have to do to develop that property. It's your property, you own it. So the question to me is, it's not what's best. It's conceded by the very words that it could be two and a half stories or three stories, it could be forty feet or forty-five. The Planning Board isn't taking a position on what's best. The question is, who decides what's best? You know, the property owner, within a zone that's acceptable to the Planning Board, or a few people? And it seems to me that, you know, I agree with Mr. Richard, too, that that jump ball should go to the property owner.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Further on the question, Mr. Zakelli?
I guess, I guess to avoid confusion, we know what we want. We're trying to push two-and-a-half-story buildings in the GBD Two and Three, and if you want to go higher than that, you need a review. That's it.
All those in favor, please rise. Seventeen. Fourteen.
Sixteen.
Sixteen.
Thirteen.
Thirteen. Hundred and thirty-five members of the town meeting having voted, ninety votes in the affirmative necessary for passage, eighty-two people having voted in the affirmative, the motion fails. This brings us to Article Six. Yes, Mr. Shennett?
Just a point of order. Could you explain the reconsideration rules again?
Yes. A motion for reconsideration under Robert's Rules of Order can be made at any time at which a main motion is not pending before the body. It must be seconded. Once a motion for reconsideration is made under the Winchester bylaws, it cannot be considered again until the next session of the town meeting, or if there shall be no further session, as the last matter of business in the session that we're in. As we know, there will be another session, at this rate, another eight sessions. We will, under the bylaws, we will consider it as the first order of business. It's a motion for reconsideration. It requires a two-thirds vote to pass. So on Monday, May 6, the first order of business will be the motion for reconsideration under Article Two. Having been made and seconded, it will require a two-thirds vote for passage. If that vote passes and the motion for reconsideration is granted, then we will immediately proceed to a vote on the main motion itself, Article Two, which also will require a two-thirds vote. If it fails, then we'll move on to the next order of business.
Point of information.
Point of information, Mr. Conti. Point of information, Mr. Conti.
Mr. Moderator, is it not true that under Robert's Rules of Order, a motion for reconsideration can only be filed by someone who has voted in the affirmative?
Under Robert's Rules of Order, a motion for reconsideration is, you're correct, typically made by a person who voted for the affirmative, someone who has changed their mind. But, it has been the tradition and practice of this town meeting not to impose that requirement, and the chair will not impose it in this instance. Any more lawyers out there? We are exhausted, but we'll do one more Article 6, and then we will adjourn at the conclusion of Article 6. Article 6, under Article 6, brought by the planning board to see if the town will vote to add a new section, 6.4, Inclusionary Housing into the general business districts 2 and 3, to the Winchester zoning bylaw as follows, or take any other action in relation there to. The motion and article is as set forth on pages 6 and 7 of the motion book. Under Article 6, it's moved and seconded. The town approved Article 6 as printed in the warrant. On the motion, on behalf of the proponents, the planning board, the town planner, Mr. Zakelli, Mr. Zakelli.
The objective of Article 6 is to expand affordable housing, and when we say affordable housing, we mean deed-restricted housing within Winchester. The projects that are addressed by this change are projects in the GBD 2 and 3, where at least six housing units are proposed. It's not in the GBD 1, because housing is not allowed in the GBD 1. So, developers wishing to override our zoning and build 40Bs in town may do so if less than 10% of our housing units are deed-restricted, or on the so-called SHI. Currently, as you guys saw in the graph from several people before, they're currently to where around 2% of units are on the SHI. So, we're trying to expand the number of units on the SHI, otherwise, we risk having large projects in places that are ill-advised for dense housing. The newly adopted HPP calls for the expansion of inclusionary housing, which is currently only in the Center Business District. So, the solution is to use the existing language in the zoning bylaw for deed-restricted housing in the CBD, and require it in the GBD 2 and 3, where we are experiencing new multifamily housing continuing north out of the Center Business District.
May we have a recommendation from the Select Board?
Yeah, the Select Board voted unanimously to support Article 6. Every time that a development with a lot of housing gets built that has no affordable component, we get, you know, the numerator stays the same, the denominator gets bigger, and so that 1.8% gets even smaller. So, we absolutely support this article.
Thank you, Mr. Kalyavoff. Further in the question, two-thirds vote being required. The chair will attempt a voice vote. All those in favor, I'm sorry, Mr. Conti.
I know this is a fool's errand, but somebody's got to oppose these proposals. Look, we have a lot of proposals in the works, as we were told earlier this evening by the planning board. There are a number of proposals that would provide affordable housing in town so that we don't need to mandate it. And the effect of this will be, you know, to raise the cost of, yes, you'll have a few affordable housing units in particular projects in this, in the two general business districts, but the cost, there's not, you don't get something for nothing. The cost has to be picked up somewhere, and this is going to raise the cost of the remaining units in those buildings that are constructed with the affordable housing requirement. So, you know, most of us live in buildings that were, houses that were built long before these kinds of requirements were thought of. Think about the people who are going to be coming into town and are going to have to pay the higher cost to make up for these so-called affordable units, which, by the way, I wonder if they're really affordable based upon what the numbers that I've seen thrown around for the so-called affordable units. So, and I really think this is unwise. I know it's not going to meet with any success, but I, for what it's worth, will be opposing this.
Thank you, Mr. Conti. Ms. Sarah.
Ms. Sarah and Mr. Conti agree in one area here. I'm confused about this article, because I think that it handcuffs us to get better language from our, you know, every single time that we have a little parcel that needs to be developed. These parcels are small and in-between, and they, I agree with our planning board that we need some sort of a, kind of a thing that we can do as a baseline. Look, here's what you have to do if you want to develop these small and few between parcels that might be developed. But, the problem is, is that I think that we might need to be able to allow us to engage and negotiate with developer a little bit more. And I think what this thing, what this article might do is handcuff us and say, this is our bottom line. Once you do that, you might not be able to do any, you're done. This is all we request of you. And I think in many cases, we might request more. So, that's the reason why I'm a little bit concerned about this article.
Thank you, Ms. Sarah. Further in the question, Ms. Richard. I'm sorry, go ahead, sir.
I just had a question as to, with regards to the percentages versus just building a 40B. I mean, are we just pushing people, because with a 40B, you can ignore all zoning, whereas here, we're trying people to abide by zoning, but build the 40B.
The town meeting members' question to the planning board proponents, Mr. Zakelli, please explain the contrast between the proposed article and 40B, and what the difference is between the two.
The proposal, which is currently in use in the Center Business District, is if it's six units or more, you're have to, you're required to do 10% of the units to be deed-restricted. If it's 25 units or more, 10% need to be restricted, and 5% are for middle income, which is between 80 and 120% of AMI, the area median income. So, it's technically not affordable, the other 5%. So, but back to what a 40B is, a 40B is 25%. So, a 40B is 25% affordable. If it's not 25% affordable, it's not a 40B. You can't override the zoning unless it's 25. So, it's 10% is what we're requiring, and 25 is what a 40B is.
Further in the question, Ms. Richard.
I think I'd like to just go to the first principles here. When we talk about affordable housing, I grew up in Chelsea. There's a lot of affordable housing there. There's a reason there's less affordable housing in Winchester. It's nicer. I don't know that, you know, if this is something we want, maybe housing is a right for people, but is living in Winchester a right for people? I don't know. I'd like to live in Malibu. I can't afford it. So, you know, where do you draw that line? And even if you do decide it's a right, why do we impose that just on a handful of property owners who are going to build six units? Why don't we all chip in and help out? I mean, it's as, we're all getting the benefit of the market here in Winchester, and then we get up and we speak about, we think the market's too high. You know, the market only sets the maximum price you can sell for. Anyone here who wants to sell a house for 10% or 50% less is free to do so. And you want to show your commitment to affordable housing, sell your house for less money. But, if this person or that person decides they want to take full advantage of the market, they're not bad people. And I think it's wrong for the majority to take a handful of people and take what we think is a social responsibility and place it specifically on a few people. That's not, that's not good government. That's democracy as two wolves and a sheep deciding what's for dinner. That's just not right. And it's virtue on the cheap is what it is. We're deciding, we're all for affordable housing. Well, not my house, when I sell it, but the guy down the street who hasn't built yet, we're going to take some from him and give it out. Then, on the practical issue, you're not going to get to 10% in this town. There's just not enough land to get there. So, all of these feeble attempts to get from, I don't know where we are now, 2% to 10? Do the math. I haven't done it, but even in my head, I know you can't get there. There's just not enough land to build enough to get 10% of the housing stock here. And finally, I just, it's beyond the scope of this meeting, but this 40B law is, it's not a royal edict. Moses didn't come down from the mountain with 40B on a tablet. Why don't we go after 40B and repeal the stupid thing? If we don't like it, do we have representatives in the legislature that represent our interest? Let's petition them to kick it out. It seems like everyone complains about it as if it were a given, like the weather. It's not. We're the citizens of this state. If we don't like the laws of this state, we should change them. So, I'd vote against this, but, you know, for obvious reasons. Thanks.
Mr. Richard.
Mr. Servier, John Servier is the chairperson of the Winchester Housing Partnership Board. I'm chair of the Housing Partnership Board. The Housing Partnership Board voted unanimously to support approval of Article 6. And what Article 6 does is extend the same inclusionary housing provisions that currently apply in the town center to also apply for new developments along North Main Street. This article ensures that multifamily developments in this new housing will serve a range of incomes, rather than serving only high incomes, which is what developers are tending to build right now. The, this inclusionary housing that exists in the CBD is actually quite conservative compared to what many other communities are doing, in that the corresponding existing provisions in the town center nonetheless are proving to be both workable and helpful. Having this as a requirement is more effective than negotiating on a case-by-case basis. A developer knows from the very beginning that this provision needs to be incorporated in their development. This inclusionary housing bylaw will prove to be equally beneficial in the GBD 2 and GBD 3 zoning districts. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Servier. Yes. Mr. Gerius.
D. Gerius, Precinct 8. I'm also on the planning board, but I'm speaking as a town meeting member. Prior comment from a gentleman about why we don't repeal Chapter 40B, it's not for lack of trying. There have been, I don't know, hundreds perhaps, attempts to revise 40B. It's a very complicated law. It's been on the books for almost as long as I've been alive, maybe? I don't know. It's been on there for a very long time. Chapter 40B was put in place because communities were not taking responsibility for putting in affordable housing. You know, it was in the late '60s. We are, you know, however many years later, I can't do the math, we still have a problem of 2%, less than 2% in this town. So, whether we like 40B or not, it is the law of the state. It is not going to be repealed anytime soon. So, we have to live with that reality. Now, by right, in GBD 2 and 3, you can put in four units of housing, and you will not be affected by this inclusionary housing. And that's what you see right now. The developments that are going in are four residential units over a single, usually small, commercial unit, because that's the only way they can get four in. So, what this does is say, if you're going to produce more than six, six units or more, then you have to add one unit. And remember, for every 10 units that goes in without another house, or another unit on our subsidized housing inventory, as was pointed out, we fall further and further behind. So, I am of the opinion that, yes, we should be asking the entire community to look at how we can do a better job getting affordable housing. But, that is a much larger discussion. What we are seeing is that there is development happening in the GBDs 2 and 3, and we want to make sure that we capture the opportunity to get us more affordable units. And that's it. Thank you. I urge you to vote yes on this.
Thank you, Mr. Gerius. Sir.
Tell me your member moves the question. Two-thirds vote being required to move the question. Chair will attempt a voice vote. If the motion to move the question passes, we will proceed immediately to a vote on Article 6 without further debate. Is there a second? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Mashem. On the motion to move the question, all those in favor, please rise, and the tellers will come. Thirty-seven. Twenty. Twenty, thirty-one. All those opposed? Two.
One.
One.
Zero.
Zero.
Eight.
On the motion to move the question, 130 members of the town meeting having voted, 87 votes in the affirmative necessary for passage, 119 members of the town meeting having voted affirmatively, the motion to move the question passes. This brings us immediately to a vote on Article 6 without further debate. Now, on the main question, on the motion brought by the planning board under Article 6, all those in favor, please rise, and the tellers will come. Fifteen. Thirty-seven.
Forty-three.
Thirty-one. Thirty-one. All those opposed, please rise. Zero.
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 Two.
Two.
Six.
Hundred and thirty-four members of the town meeting having voted, 90 votes in the affirmative necessary for passage, 126 members of the town meeting having voted affirmatively, Article 6 passes. Chair will entertain a motion to adjourn. Second, the meeting is adjourned until Monday, May 6, at 7:30 PM in this auditorium. Thank you very much for your patience. Thank you very much for your patience.
Good evening once again, ladies and gentlemen. This is the conclusion. Seeing the town meeting has just adjourned, first session of spring town meeting 2019 here on April 29th. Let's recap what happened in the first half of the meeting, which was the reports, Article One, which is the reports of the town boards and officers. We heard first from the Board of Health, talking about vaccinations, new vaccines, HPV vaccines, pneumonia vaccine, shingles vaccines, and 1,300 doses of flu vaccines given this year. Reminded the residents that a hazardous waste collection session will be held at the DPW on this Saturday, May 4th, and touched on the actions of the Coalition for a Safer Community. Heard from the Library Board of Trustees, saying that the services were maintained in the current budget, and there were 236,000 visits to the library this year, and online services and loan of equipment is growing rapidly at the library. Mariana Goluboff, the chairman of the Board of Select Board, thanked the outgoing retiring Select Board members Lance Grenzaback and David Rico for their service, and welcomed Susan Verdicchio and Amy Shapiro to the board. He said that the $10 million override was approved, of which 2 million is for capital stabilization, and there's about 3.3 excess in that override that is reserved for, hopefully for future spending in the next two or three years, maybe up to four. Some of the challenges, he said, were climate change, flooding issues, always trying to mitigate those flooding issues, energy-saving projects in the town involving LED lighting and solar, and the town was trying to strive to make a net-zero greenhouse emissions town with the work of the Climate Action Committee. The housing production plan was approved, but we still need to get 79 units in the next two years to achieve what he called "safe harbor" against unfriendly 40B projects. He said the Master School Building Administration rejected the request for funding for Lynch and Morocco schools, but those will be resubmitted. The Morocco culvert is still a remaining project to be worked on for flood mitigation, and the planning stage for the MBTA train station in the center of town was moving forward. Finance Committee Chair said the override originally requested 12 million and was reduced to 10 million. He said the town has a $128.3 million budget, but right now of the override, 4.7 million is going into operating and 2% being spent in the first year for capital stabilization. Touched on pension liability concerns, said the town was fortunate to have only a 3% increase in health insurance, and has maintained a little over 10% cash reserves. School Committee Chairman thanked the voters for the override pass, said there was going to be an 8.9, negotiating 8.9% raise to the teachers over the next four years. The school committee is striving to maintain reasonable class sizes, and with an increasingly diverse community, said there were two sections of Mandarin Chinese language classes. There was an increase in number of counselors. The largest kindergarten class in 10 years is incoming, and McCall Phase Two is underway. Lisa Wong, the town manager, talked about the housing production plan that was approved. Code of bylaws are being updated. A field use study is underway. Remarked that Chief John Nash of the Fire Department will be retiring this fall, and they'll be looking for a replacement, and said 30% of the design of the MBTA station has been completed. Gave a, he said, on the website, there's a bid and construction schedule for capital projects. The town has received half a million dollars in grants, and is very concerned about the cost of recycling, which currently is about $10 a ton, and is projected to increase possibly to as much as $60 a ton in the next two years. She also said the town is working on pedestrian and traffic safety issues. Planning Board talked about projects, an approved subdivision going up at Highland Avenue and Dana Ave, right down near Forest Street. This property that was going to be a CVS at Swanton and Washington is under agreement, and they're waiting for proposals to come forward. At Skelling Street, a proposal for two commercial and eight residential units is underway. 147 units of housing on River Street have been proposed. The Fell's Hardware Project, which was withdrawn, is going to be resubmitted, and the master plan, master plan committee is underway. After recess, town meeting started taking up articles. Article Two, the planning board gained an overview of the as-of-right versus review processes. Site plan reviews are generally for large changes. Special permit reviews are done for projects that have a large impact to the community. The planning board grants permits in GBD I, II, and III. GBD I, II, and III are mostly going from the center, up Main Street to the Woburn Line and in the Center Business District. The Center Business District Design Review Committee and the Historical Commission, when the law was changed to allow more, encourage more residential development in Central Business District, a subcommittee of the Design Review Committees and the Historical Committees were doing the reviews. The planning board said that that's not working and wanted to go back to the review of the full boards. Craig Rabby, the president of the Chamber of Commerce, spoke in opposition to many of these articles, said it would increase costs, stifle development, and the need to expand the town's tax base, in the chamber's view. The Select Board was against this article. It said it puts up barriers in the Center Business District. The final vote was 124 to 83, but one vote short of the 84 votes that was required to pass. So then, Article Two failed. There was a motion to reconsider that, which will be reconsidered at the next meeting of town meeting, which is next Monday. Article Three, an increase in floor area restrictions, was indefinitely postponed. Article Four, reducing the lot size of lots required, that require special review, was to reduce the lot size from 15,000 to 7,500 square feet. There are 25 new parcels in these GBD I, II, and III zones, again, going up Main Street. Select Board said they support it, because a lot of these properties are bought residential properties, and in a commercial lot, 15,000-square-foot lot, the building can cover the entire lot. And they commented the fact that GBD I, II, and III are mixed-use, with residential housing in with the commercial housing. That did pass. Article Five, to reduce the building height that needs variances, planning board said it was to keep a pedestrian scale, but the Select Board, and the Select Board approved, however, that article failed. So Article Five failed. Article Six, the planning board is, was encouraging affordable housing by mixed-use, putting some affordable housing requirements in GBD II and III. The Select Board supported it, because it expands the restrictions that are already in place for the CBD, Central Business District, and that Article Six passed. So that is where the town meeting has wrapped up tonight. Article Six, a long, a long agenda coming up, so a total of 43 articles. So the next meeting of the town meeting will be next Monday. Town meeting by Winchester's bylaws cannot pass any fiscal, anything that it spends money before the first Monday in May. So that would be next Monday. So we will be back covering that here at Winchester High School, and we thank you for joining us tonight. I'm Alan Idon. Thank you to the Wind Cam crew. Have a great night.